So as we start the meeting this morning, are there any additions to the agenda?
Administration does not have any additions. Thanks.
Counsel? None. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the November 15th, 2023 regular meeting of council as presented? Deputy Mayor Clark, thank you for that. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to November 1st, 2023 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt those minutes? Thank you very much. Counsel Gomana? All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning and no public hearings. We'll jump right into our delegations. We have five delegations this morning. The first is our community recognition. And we are going to start by recognizing our past MLA, Mark Smith. He is here with his wife Lisa. We'd like to thank him for coming and say welcome to council. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've been a longtime community member, born all the way in Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan, and then you made your way to Alberta. Mark began his studies and achieved a Bachelor of Education from the University of Alberta and set the way for his 30-year-long teaching career at the Frank Maddock High School, teaching social studies. Along with teaching, all of us about history, Mark dedicated a great deal of his time being a mentor and teacher in the community. Whether he was coaching girls and boys basketball at the high school or at the Drayton Valley Community Basketball Team over the years, his love for sports and the community runs deep. Mark's interest for politics began after his teaching career, and he helped to build up the Reform Party here in Alberta and was the campaign manager for Preston Manning, representing the Yellowhead Riding. This is where his passion for politics all began. From then, Mark became a member of the Legislative Assembly and was first elected to the Waldrose Party in 2015 and re-elected in 2019 as MLA and joined his United Conservative Party colleagues. He was honored to be chosen as MLA for the Drayton Valley Devon Riding and strove to represent his constituents. You truly have done an amazing job serving Drayton Valley and everywhere we turned, we've always heard how hard you were working and always trying to do your best to make things happen and create opportunities here in the community. You banged down that door at the Legislative Building. Every time we turned around, we heard from ministers what a fantastic job you were doing representing Drayton Valley, bringing our challenges, our issues, creating opportunities for us. So thank you very much for that. For this, all of us want to thank you greatly, your efforts that you put in, the hard work that you did day after day. Along the way, you've made very many important and hard decisions. It's been an honor and a privilege working alongside of you. You now get to enjoy your retirement and continue doing the things that you love, spending time with your family, your wife Lisa, and your three kids, continuing to make memories. We'll be sure to see you and your family outdoors along the way, being active, whether it's hiking up in the mountains or at the Pembina Nordic Ski Trails. Not long after your retirement, I was lucky enough to see you up in Nordic with your family. It was a pleasure. So I'm sure that I'll see you out there on the mountains or the hills here again. Your many passions for your church, family, and community are stronger than ever. You'll have some extra time now to play guitar, continue to be part of your worship team at the church, and enjoy all the moments a little bit more. Sit back and relax, the community that you have grown. Words cannot express enough how thankful we are for everything that you have done for our community and the opportunities that you have created. It's been such a pleasure working with you and trying to make a difference in our community together. I've learned lots along the way from you. I may not have paid attention in social studies, but over the last few years, you've taught me many things. So for this, I say thank you. All of council, thanks you very much. Enjoy being away from politics and from all of this, and we'll see you around the community. Thank you very much, Mark. And now you'd like to come up and have a little picture with us? That'd be fantastic.
Charles, just beginning with the question. One of the questions I asked, why was it so different this year? This year, you seem to be able to stop the run, stop it on the inside, stop it on the outside. Again, the first year, you just couldn't seem to get that down. Casey on there is like, you know, everybody does their job. And I feel like that, everybody else feels that gap. Then all of a sudden, the football team can work together. And that got me thinking because if the statue looks like they're even pulling together, it's a team. And I still believe that. You know, an MLA is always successful because first the constituents believe they can do the job. So if you're successful as an MLA, it's because your constituents have placed their trust. That's an amazing thing. And then you get to work with all sorts of powers, of violence, of reason, in the organization. And you're only successful when those people do their jobs, do their jobs, and we cooperate and work together. You only are successful as an MLA when your office staff helps to me. I want to recognize when it's snowing today, standing to send, there we go, send the bishop. We put a thousand hours in a house. So, you know, I'm thankful for that admission, but I wanted to make sure that we understand that only when the people in this community work. It was a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you for that, Mark. Isn't that true, the truth, that it's all about us all pulling together? And thank you to the ladies also for helping build our community as well. I know you've been there all along the way too, so thank you for that. Thanks for coming and everything that you've done. Enjoy your retirement. And thanks, Lisa, for helping me. Before we move on to our next delegation, I just want to take a minute and read a few letters. The last few weeks, council and myself have been receiving letters, whether they're in my inbox through my email or they're sitting on my desk. They've came from a group of students in the community. I'm thinking that they came from HW Pickup. And the only reason I'm thinking that is because we have friends that have a son there. And what the teacher had tasked the students with was to write letters to the mayor. And he had said, why would I write a letter to the mayor and ask her for what I want when I can just ask her when she comes to my house? So he got out of that project. So that's why I'm assuming that these are coming from HW Pickup students. So I just wanted to share a few of the letters with you and see what some of the younger generation are asking for in our community before we move forward. So the first letter, Dear Mrs. Dodds, I think we need a Starbucks in town because many parents, teachers, and students love Starbucks. Then when teachers come to school drinking their coffee, they won't be mad, unlike when they don't have coffee. I think Starbucks would be good for you because it would make people more want to come to Drayton Valley. Once my mom wanted coffee, and then she had Tim Horton's coffee that morning before, so she didn't get her coffee. She said that she wished there was a Starbucks in town instead. Happy Halloween. The next one is, we need a couple more fun things here, like a cooking class for moms, dads, and young kids to learn how to cook. People are out there and they can't cook, and it's good to learn when they get older, and old people like to learn and have fun. Please make one. It's my dream to be a pastry chef, so I even work, I'll even work for zero dollars. That is how much it means to me. Please do it now. I know it will be hard, but Drayton Valley is your town. Have a good day. You're a great person. Another one is, in my and other people's opinions, we need a mini Tellus World of Science. We could make it the size of Evergreen Elementary School. It could have a Lego exhibit, a gift shop, elephant toothpaste, and it could have all freeze-dried ice cream. One last one I'll read is, in my opinion, I think Drayton Valley needs more fun activities. Drayton Valley needs a trampoline park, a volleyball court, or even an escape room, something that would be nice. The only exciting activities in Drayton are swimming, bowling, and the movies, which aren't always appropriate for kids and swimming, and the bowling alley, which isn't always open. Stuff like that would be awesome. I hope you could make this possible. I hope you can encourage other businesses to make our town better. Thanks for your time. There were so many other letters that I'd received and have come to my desk, so I just want to thank the students that sent these in. I think it's just a reminder that it's not just the adults that have a wish list for how they want to see the community grow. So for any entrepreneurs out there that are wanting to start a new business adventure, I have got the start of that portfolio right here. So maybe we want to add maybe a few things to the community. Otherwise, maybe these are some things we can talk about during our budget discussion. So I just wanted to share those with you. I thought they were so cute. And I get them every year, so it's nice. So thank you for that, from whichever school they came from. I'm thinking HW Pickup. So along next, 7.2, our delegation this morning, we have Opportunity Home Recovery and Treatment Center. Welcome, and I will ask you to come down to the podium.
Good morning, counsel, and thank you for affording us this opportunity to provide you a quick presentation of one of our asks. My name is Brett Peckwin. I'm the Executive Director of Opportunity Home. And I would like to take this time to invite down the rest of the members of our team, my Assistant Executive Director Cody Fisher, and our Board Chair and President Art Ray. I guess if we could start the PowerPoint here. So a little bit about us, we've, I apologize to turn my back to you. So we're a structured support recovery house for adult men. Our program is designed to guide and support men on their journey through the recovery process. Our program is based on a holistic model in that it addresses the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual needs of men. We're an all-inclusive faith-based home and incorporate a 12-step model in our recovery program. So that model is based on, it's a bio-psycho-social-spiritual model of addiction that's well-defined within the addiction community. And our mission is to, is to make real change, not just in our community, but as a model for society. Our mission is to provide a program and infrastructure that empowers men to want to heal and want to participate in society and humanity again, not just to hide from it. We provide these men with opportunities to pursue personal academic and professional goals to enhance their quality of life and become contributing members of this community. Addiction is not, does not have to be a lifelong sentence, and we as a community can help. We fundamentally believe that everybody has the ability to change, and we're just in stuck places. And that's a part of the cycle of addiction that we're trying to address. Next slide, please. So our Next Steps program is basically an after graduating, the 90-day program. Men have an opportunity, can continue to stay in residence with us in community, so get jobs, move forward, education, whatever that takes. They can walk the path of abstinence and sobriety and remain with us. So we're trying to build a community of abstinence around that. And so advancing their career, their skill set, reemployment, housing, all that is all part of the Next Steps program. Next slide, please. And so some of our demographics, we've been in operation for nine months. We were licensed by the Mental Health and Addictions Ministry in last year. We opened our doors in February 2023. Our very first client was from our homeless community, these are some of the demographics over that period. So 50% of our program is subsidized. So we privately subsidize our clients to no benefit, for no contributions from the province in that regard. So again, the idea is we want to remove as many barriers to recovery for all men, not just men within our community. So 50% of the clients that present to us are on some sort of assistance program through the government. So that's Alberta Works, AHEI, and we subsidize on top of that to offset the costs for them to receive treatment. 10% of our population thus far has been justice involved, so probation, conditional sentence orders were integrated with EMS community, so conditions around that. Men have to present to probation officers, check in, they're on a CSO, they are released into the community under guidance. So one of our senior personnel or staff would be accompanying them, so that's to AA, NA, doctor's appointments, et cetera. 40% of our population suffers with concurrent disorders, so that's addiction and a diagnosed mental health disorder. There's all kinds of complexities there, but we have to contend with that. We have a psychiatrist in town that specializes in addictions that we utilize, and there's many other mental health practitioners in our community that support us in that regard. 10% of our population is either indigenous, Mity, Asian African, Hispanic, multi-ethnic, 90% Caucasian, 10% senior. At 40% of our population voluntarily withdrew from program, that is very common. Statistics in recovery, generally speaking, are less than 10%. About 7% is the actual number from the latest numbers that we've been able to obtain. So having a success rate at the end there of 40% is really good for us. What happens most often in addictions is as people go through the program, especially that come from the population, the homeless, underhoused population that have had severe trauma and addictions, is they get very, very anxious towards the end of the program. We're trying to rehabilitate them, set a new pathway for them in recovery, and that becomes very challenging. They get anxious, and that's too much for them, and they'll exit voluntarily, right? It's easier to go back to patterns of what we've known than what we don't know. 40% of our population is local, so you know, these are men that have, you know, they grew up here, right? They're not necessarily homeless or underhoused. They're successful people that got in a stuck place, and they want some help, and we're there to help them. So 20% of our population has been dismissed. So there are rules, obviously, and prohibited drug use is one of those rules. So there are community guidelines that we abide, and we have to enforce, so we do from time to time have to dismiss. And again, as I mentioned, 10% of our population came from the homeless community here, so. And we have 40% graduation success rate, and that continues to improve as we come, and that's nine months in, so. A little bit about us. So right now, our biggest costs are related to staffing, obviously, so this is just a breakdown of that. Our total operational expenses are around $500K. Next slide, please. And I will bring our President Art Frey down to just go over these last few slides with us and talk about our program. Art?
We took the vote and felt that I was better at begging for money than he was. Anyway, what you can see here, this kind of emulates with what Mark Smith had just talked about, and that is together, you know, we're gonna, we'll have to deal with this problem. So the $500,000, like Brett was saying, is, you know, we got nine months of hard numbers into it, and it'll probably come in somewhere between $350,000 to $400,000 to run facility, all inclusive, you know, with power bill. So we're asking this to be spread. We're approaching the Town Council, Brazo Council, and we're approaching the province for $100,000 each year. And we feel with our board and with our staff that we'll be able to carry the other $200,000 with fundraising that we do. The, Brett asked, invited me to, they start their morning with some scripture reading out of Proverbs, and they share. And I thought I'd just share with you the last prayer that these men say, and it's very moving that, you know, they come from all over Alberta, and these men are praying for you guys as well in the sense that, that for continued support from everybody. They talk about their families, their brothers and sisters, their mom, their dad. They talk about our board, they talk about counselors, you know, Town Council and MD Council. So here's one of the closing prayers that they read and believe in. So if we really want to learn and grow, we must be willing to be held accountable by receiving constructive criticism from others. Many of us, it is hard to receive reproof, because even when it is shared in love, it hurts. Our tendency may be to ignore correction, to avoid hurt, or to collapse emotionally because we are devastated by a word constructive criticism. We would be wise to ask for feedback from people we respect. That way, we will learn from our mistakes and grow and mature. So it's, this is consistent through the 90 days of continuing deeper growth with themselves, with problems, and trading it for a more dignified life. Just as a closing comment, I was with another meeting a couple of weeks ago, and one of the counselors, Town counselors, said that the fire, the fire that we had this spring, what it did is, it brought our whole community together, the Town Council and the MD Council. And we all learned as a community of people that we're together in this. And, and I, I see this as a similarity, the fire, when the fire started, it was a grass fire. It could have been put out by 10, 10 people, two people. And, and as it grew, it'd become overwhelming, and, and with, with all of the elements of nature, this thing completely encompassed us for months to get out of it. And that's what I see with the homeless and the addiction problem. It's, it's a small grass fire. It's not a small grass fire. It's been burning for quite a few years. But how we're gonna get out of this is not a handful of board members on O H. It's not gonna be a handful of staff people on O H. It's gonna be all of us pulling together in the county as well. It's gonna take not only money, but Brett and Cody have, have, you know, are looking for integration and have gone to integration and support from other communities, societies in Drayton dealing with it. So we thank you for that, and we ask for continued support. So I think the last couple of slides, I don't know. I think that's pretty well it. Did you?
Yeah, I'll just, just expound a little bit on Art's message and, and and Mark Smith's concluding. So there's a, there's a common parlance in the recovery community, and Cody and I often talk about, that it doesn't present the way it is. It's not an elevator pitch that we can talk about addiction. It's a complex series of problems again, and it's mired in social malaise, and you know, the complexities around recovery are inordinate. And so one of the comments I often speak to is that it's not what you think. The opposite of addiction isn't recovery, it's community, and it's community pulling together. And that's the essence of what Mark said and what Art is affirming and what we stand for. And it's liaising between services, you know, such as FCSS, PCN, AHS, you know, there's a myriad of services and talents within this community. And so it's adjunct therapies as well. It's not just 12 steps. It's not just a walk in faith. It's adjunct here. Cody brings a breath practitioner, he's a breath practitioner. He brings other modalities, and there's many other talents within our community that bring other modalities of healing. It's not a one-and-done. It's not a linear path to recovery. Relapse lapsing is all part of that. It's all part of that, that process of recovery. Some people can do it real quickly, some people can't, and that's part, we have to be there for them. But what we really want to do is to target that demographic that we started with and improve our conversion rates within the community, and that's through outreach. But we need your support. We fundamentally need the support of the community. There's a lot of misnomer about what we are doing. We're feeding the homeless. We're, you know, we're just a bed for the homeless. We're none of that, really. You know, we have standards and rules we have to abide. Nobody walks through our door without medically assisted detox, for one, right? So they have to, we need the medical community involved. This is a medical problem. This is a disease of society. We have to get, we have to come to a fundamental understanding of what the nature of this problem is. And so the province is doing laudable things. You know, we've had ministers come through our community and continue to do that and applaud what we're doing. And where the province is positioned right now is that they would like to expound upon what we're doing here in Drayton Valley as a model for the rest of the province. You see where the monies is going. The monies are going to urban centers. That's where the problem is most acute, most, the focus goes there. It's in every community in our province. We're not indifferent to that. So, so in closing, is there any questions?
Thank you very much for that. I'll open it up for questions. Counsel Clark?
Yeah, thanks for, for your presentation, Brett. Now, I guess, do you guys have a view, I guess, with the recent changes in AHS? You know, we have, you know, they're gonna compartmentalize things a little bit and have some pillars, and specifically, they have health and addictions. Do you see AHS, or not AHS, Alberta Health, playing a bigger role, I guess, with you guys both, you know, functionally and/or with funding?
Right. No, yes and no. There's two parts to that calling, and one is that, so mental health and addictions is its own ministry now. It's not under the HS umbrella. So that recent change has caused a little bit of uproar. You've heard Premier Smith trying, talking about what their intent, the province's intent is with AHS. trying, talking about what her, their intent, the province's intent is with A H S, so my understanding is they're gonna pull a lot of the mental healths out of A H S, and that'll, and that'll, it'll fall into the domain of mental health and addiction ministry. So there are some regulatory changes underway right now, we're subject to those as well, you know, so that's really new. Sorry, what was the second part of your question, Colin?
Yeah, the second part was just the funding, and I guess, kinda to, to further that a little bit, is, is there a role the town can play to help advocate to the ministry?
I'm sure there is, I'm not nuanced enough right now in this field to, to speak to that directly. We did get some supports from the province initially for operating and improvement of the facility cost, or that, that's still underway. You know, we're not accredited. So that's because we felt, you know, that's where the province looked before as accredited, you know, they're, the goal of the province under the recovery oriented system of care umbrella is to break down the silos, have ministries working together, now that M H A is its own ministry, they'll continue to do that and massage that, the province is trying to build ten thousand beds, recovery beds, they're all full, that's why men are coming to us, and that's why we have to subsidize, you know, the the full meal ticket for us is sixty six hundred dollars for ninety days, you know, that, that, that's a part, not everybody has the wherewithal to do that, so we subsidize and support them, because we want, as a community, our, our obligations are to remove as many barriers to recovery as possible. You know, and so we've done that in a number of ways, you know, and it's not, when I say we, it's not us, it is other members of the community that have done that, Lola and her team, you know, have been, you know, extraordinarily helpful in, in helping us navigate that space, we've, we've taken risks as well. You know, mental health is a serious issue, can we contend with that, we have to look at each case individually and, and, and assess it like that, and not put our other clients at risk, so, sorry, Colin, I'm to be more succinct, I guess, the province will come, but it's probably with funding, but it's probably more at next steps level. You know, if we wanna follow that accreditation model and get under that umbrella, there is dollars for us, but that's a three to five year window for us to, once we get baseline data. You know, we, staffing are accredited, they, they're, they're members of professional society, so they do support that, so that's a long, that's a long term aspect, I know, we could probably go to the province for another ask, but I don't know, that's a bit of a laborious process, so it's, again, getting back to the, the, my point, or our point is that, you know, it's community that heals, we would like community support, and that's long term community support, integrated in however fashion we need to do that, and we're open to that.
Any other questions? Councilor Evans?
Can you just tell me what the, how many, how many folks you've, you've?
We're a ten bed facility.
And, and how many have you, have gone through?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent men have gone through there, so there's, oh, we're on a ninety day cycle.
So how, how, how many, how many clients have you gone through?
Everybody that's left and stuff, probably around twenty.
Okay, yeah, you've given us all the percentages and everything, I was just wondering what the hard number was, thank you.
Any other questions? When you talked about voluntary, voluntarily withdrew from the program, did you have anyone come back after they, you did, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the recovery cycle, too. We're like Christ.
Yeah.
Tune for second, third, fourth, fifth chances.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
So you don't, like, put any conditions on as long as?
Yeah, we do.
Falls these some rules, and?
Yeah.
Then they can come back, kind of thing?
They're behavioral contracts, so they enter into behavioral contracts, and if they can abide by them, we'll assess them, but everybody, it's individualized therapy and, and recovery that we try to afford, and we do have an advantage of being a small facility to afford men that, and the men that have been successful, even the ones that haven't have applauded us, we're still members of the community. So there's other supports that have, you know, we have an N A community, Narcotics Anonymous, Alcoholics Anonymous. Cody has been instrumental in bringing Gambling Anonymous to our community, we're so blessed to have him in our community to do that, because that is, we're all sports fans, you don't have to look too far to see what kind of addiction, and those are process or behavioral addictions, and they inordinately impact the young and the, and the old.
Absolutely. Can you just talk a little bit more about the accredited, not being accredited versus the accreditation model, like, so what I'm hearing is that if you were accredited, then you would be able to have access to additional provincial funding?
So under the, I don't know where that model stands to date, the formal model, if we were to become accredited, we'd fall under A H S, and they have a per dollar, per diem, per day, per man bed equivalent, so it has to do with programming hours, it's, I think it was a below twenty five hours a week, above twenty five hours a, a week of programming, there's X amount of dollars available, they used to have a forty dollar a day per bed model, that was, that was shelved, and now their new model is in play right now, Nancy, I don't know where it's at exactly, but we're outside of that window, we'd have to become accredited and fall under the H S umbrella, and there's other reporting requirements, so on and so forth, so.
So is that something that Opportunity Home is working towards, to gain access to these dollars, or it's just a different model that?
It, it's a different model, other recovery organizations that I'm affiliated with, we're affiliated with, like, as in, in networking capacity, there's pros and cons to both sides, I guess, to look at it, there's more autonomy when you're private, for sure. I, I, I won't mince words, we're faith based, you know, there's a secularized A H S version of that, there are many secularized twelve step programs. The program we, the program we deliver has a twenty year success period, that's modeled off of Kelowna's longstanding twenty year standing Freedom's Door, right? So faith does work in the recovery community, there's no, it's unequivocal that, that it does work. So we don't make concession or apology for that, I can't see our program moving down that, so talking to the ministry, they've said, you know, Albertans should have choice in the matter, no different than parents having a choice to go to a, a Christian school or a public secular school, so now where the rubber meets the road, that's another question, so I, I can't speak to that directly right now, where we'd be in the future, Nancy, but at this point in time, I would say we would remain private.
And do you, you continue those conversations with the ministries that have visited and everything to make sure that you're accessing any grants or?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, right, so that's, but there again, that's in play right now, there's an inordinate change, having a new ministry, people are moving positions, people don't know are coming to that, there's new liaise with us, liaison with us as well, so there's lots of knowns and unknowns at this point in time.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's definitely the truth there, well, I applaud you all for doing what you're doing and bringing opportunity home for our community, I think it's a definitely an advantage and an opportunity for people to get the help that they need and to heal and, and, you know, on that road to recovery, I think it's definitely important, we're just heading into budget discussions here, so this will be added to one of the things on our budget list, so once we have those discussions, then we'll be reaching back out to you. Colin did bring up, you know, advocating, I think that there's a lot happening at the provincial level right now with the, the premier talking about the Alberta model and dividing everything into pillars and things like that, it'll be exciting to see how that rolls out, but the town of Drayton Valley can definitely be sending in those letters of request and support for Opportunity Home, pushing and ensuring that we've got your back when it comes to provincial funding in any ways that we can help you with that, so maybe we can work with a letter to get sent, in the meantime, as we head into budget, budget discussions, like I said, are starting next week. We have a lot of heavy decisions coming our way, your ask today is a hundred thousand dollars from the town of Drayton Valley, have you presented to the county yet? Next week you'll be presenting, okay, so they'll probably tell you the same thing going into budget discussions as well, so I thank you very much for, for coming today and sharing the progress of Opportunity Home, and I wanna say thank you again for, for bringing this opportunity to our community, it's amazing, keep up the great work, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, thank you, Nancy, thank you, Council.
We'll move to our next delegation, which is seven point three, the Youth Advisory Committee. We have Serenity, Claire, Isaiah, Tony, and Tarek, I believe, this morning. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good, so maybe if you wanna just introduce yourselves, and then you can get started with your presentation, welcome, everybody.
I got, I got that honor, we have quite a great team, along with some new faces on our committee, one into our second year. Getting this honor and getting to watch these people, these young people in our community work together from all different backgrounds, all different positions, all different perspectives, along with where to start from, Dr. Unger's studies, so we're all interconnected through this community, even though we grew up in different places, got to witness that, as a lot of these people know each other in one form or another. With the four we have here today, we have our president Claire, and our vice president Tony, and then Serenity, we have her here as well, they're all gonna break it up into a few different things for you of where they specialize in. With, with Tony, she is a face, a force to direct with, or to, I don't even know what I'm saying right now, but recommend, thank you. Still shaking from that flagpole outside, you know.
A little chilly out there, no, just relax, take your time, you're doing great.
She, she and Claire both are, are driven and empowered, and I think they were great choices for the lead of this board. On the other end, Claire comes with, and she leads our, our meetings and, and our minutes, and you know, it's kinda hard to ask some young people to get into a, a corporate setting when we're used to, like, high school slang, you know, so I think they're doing a great job, and then Serenity's gonna present to us a lot of the data, she's very an analyst and gathers things as well, so I hope it's good for you guys.
Thank you very much for that, and then you do have a few other committee members, and you wanna just give them a little shout out, so, no, just their name, we won't ask much from you.
Yeah, all, all three of these wonderful ladies, we have Miss Alyssa on the, on the far right, we have Miss Ashlyn in the middle there, sorry, there's a beam, and, and Miss Beck, and they just all joined us, and they're, they're on fire, they're ready to bring some heat, and hopefully we can, you know, present some amazing stuff to, to make some things happen in your budget as well.
That's awesome, well, welcome, everybody.
So good morning, councilors and mayor, thank you for having us, I'm gonna move this, because I'm much shorter than Isaiah. Like you said, my name is Tony Thompson, I'm the vice chair, social media manager, and a graphics team member of the D V Y A C, so I've got to see a lot of different aspects of what we've been up to, so I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about what we've done so far, so our first meeting was actually May second, which, as you guys will know, only a few short days later, we were in evacuation, I'm very happy to say that, I'm very proud of the group of individuals we have that didn't slow us down at all, throughout that, we actually collected twenty different survey results, I believe that was the number during evacuation alone, so it was really interesting to see how it didn't slow any of our audience down, despite us just having started. I personally participated in an interview with the Drayton Valley Free Press on August tenth, it was super wonderful, I loved it, we got to talk a little bit about who we are, what we've done, and help us get out there a little bit more, it was one of our big first steps that we were looking forward to. We have participated in some community events, such as the Skate Park Jam and the Indoor Street Party. Specifically with the Indoor Street Party, we did get to focus a lot on the vendors that were there, connect their audience with our audience, it was super neat, we got to grow quite a bit specifically on our social media, but also have some reach with the community with that alone. We do hope to attend more community events coming up soon. We, at the Skate Park Jam, myself and chair over there, Claire, we participated in some of our survey questions face to face, now, our survey online is focused on youth retention specifically, and our audience are the same ages as the members of our board, so fourteen to twenty five. However, on the day of the Skate Park Jam, I decided to shake things up a little bit and grow our audience a little bit more, so I expanded it to anybody and everybody that was willing to participate. In fact, I interviewed over there counselor Ballis, it was super wonderful. We recently welcomed our three new members, and we're looking forward to what is to come, so shout out to those girls over there. We've been working to grow our social media and promote our survey a whole lot, but we're not just focusing on our survey only, we do promote town events, what's going on, and more specifically, also surveys, we have been promoting the Citizen Budget Platform, that has been super wonderful to reach out and participate in what's going on around town. Besides that, I'm gonna hand over the mic to Serenity, so she can talk to you about the specifics with our survey.
So over the last, how long has it been since May? I can't remember, but we started a survey in May, and that was focused on the questions that were at the Rise event, and we had, like Tony said, a bunch of people from fourteen to twenty five answer these questions, and I'm just gonna talk to you a little bit about what each of them are, and what we've gotten for responses, there were forty responses, and over the evacuation, there was actually a lot more than I expected, considering the circumstances that we were in, and so if we had, if you had a million dollars, where would you spend it? And this ranged from a lot of the same answers, and it was a, the survey was so you could write whatever you wanted to in it, so it wasn't like a multiple choice, it was you pick what you think the town needs, kind of thing. And so we had seventeen point eight percent of the people that did it said fixing the roads, along with another seventeen point eight percent said childcare, and low income housing was at six point seven percent, and healthcare was at seventeen point eight. Recreation, that falls under the category of things like having an arcade, or a safe place for the youth to hang out, for example, like the youth hub. We noticed a lot of people wanna do more things like the youth hub and have like an arcade, like, like one, in some of those letters said a volleyball court, that kind of stuff, just for teens to be able, teens and youth to be able to hang out and just be safe. Then fifteen point six percent said assistance for the homeless. And we noticed that it was, that was a lot of mention in our survey, was assistance for the homeless, and just like, we also said it's crazy that youth are saying that kind of thing from just noticing that from their point of view. And then our next question here is, what would make people wanna come back if they leave the town? Once again, recreation, things for youth to do, that was at thirty six point four percent. Family and friends was a big one, we noticed a lot of people said that, which eighteen people, which equaled up to fifty four point five percent, and then more job availability for nine point one percent of our people that did the survey. And then next one here, we have what do we have in place that makes us a resilient community? And this was just more things like recreational things under that category type thing. The swimming pool, four people said that with twenty two point two percent, the movie theater was thirty eight point nine percent, the youth hub was eleven point one percent, and the food bank was twenty seven point eight percent. That was, we noticed a lot of things that kinda like help out with people in our community, that was a lot of focus on our survey, then our last slide here, looking back at what we do have in place, what are we missing? Mental health services, that was brought up quite a few times with twenty nine point four percent of the votes. New stores in like a mall places, just for people to be able to get what they're wanting, so they don't have to leave the town to go to, for example, Edmonton or Calgary, to go and get things that they've been wanting, and that was thirty eight point two percent of the votes, and recreation, more things for teens and youth to do for thirty two point four percent of our votes. And, yeah, like I said, that had forty responses, and we are still taking responses in on that survey, trying to get. trying to get voices for the youth. And I will hand it over to our Chair, Claire.
So going forward, what we, what we're gonna do is we're gonna make our strategic plan and set that in place. So far, we've had our amazing graphics team, whose Tarek, Tony, and Serenity make our logo, which I think is really cool. We've had, like, Isaiah's getting hoodies made, so that we look more like a team, and more, what's the word, I'm blanking. Unified, if that works. Just so that we look more recognizable. We're hoping, in the future, to have a pop-up banner for events like the Skate Park Jam and things. And, in the near future, we're hoping to engage more with the youth in the community, specifically town, county, you know, like, youth in this community. And that is all, that's all I got, sorry.
So, we are very open to any questions that the councilors or mayor may have for us.
Thank you very much, that was absolutely fabulous, great job. You all did such a good job of speaking too, so you're going to be, I think, future public speakers in one way or another. That was fantastic, thank you for sharing, and really great job on the questions too. Lots of variety there, and I think you got a lot of feedback, and considering it was during the wildfire, 40 is quite a bit, so thank you very much for that. Any questions? Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, thank you very much. I had the opportunity of joining this group last night as a member from Council, and unfortunately, I had to kind of short to another commitment. However, very enthusiastic group. I just would like to ask, what would be your number one priority?
So, are you speaking for our mission, what our goal is? Okay, so, our motto is creating opportunities. So with this, we're focused really on youth retention and bringing in opportunities into the town to keep us here, keep us from going. A lot of things are focused on recreation, education, mental health services. Because we are in an advisory committee, we do want to really focus on what our peers have to say and bringing it forward to you guys.
In your presentation, and from what I gathered last night, one of the most important things in our discussion was getting a youth center.
Yes.
And can you just expand on that?
So, we obviously want a safe center for our youth to be able to participate in recreational activities, come hang out, maybe grab a bite to eat, who knows? But a youth center would be a space for our peers to have that safe, clean environment to be able to do really anything.
Thank you. Alice mentioned, you know, I had the privilege to sit on the committee last year, and for sure, they're a very enthusiastic bunch there. You know, thank you for what you're doing, the enthusiasm, going out there, you know, getting these surveys out, and being there to show your commitment and the face on the community. I guess my question, you know, just same, similar to Counselor Ballas's, we are going to the budget cycle next week, as mentioned. So would there be a formal ask from the town at that time? It's coming. Perfect, and also, I just wanted to thank Ms. Rand as well, on how well that you've, you know, got this committee going, and the effort that you've put as well. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? So, when I look at the survey, the very first question was, if you had a million dollars, where would you spend it? Very great question. And then when I look at the answers, you said that the answers, they weren't, it wasn't multiple choice, that the survey respondents got to pick their answers? It's very interesting, because when you look at the little pie here, and you see, it's very similar to items that we discuss around the council table, and when we're looking at the quality of life or the budget discussions, I think that it's interesting to see that fixing the roads is 17.8%, that it's just as important to youth when they have to go through the potholes, right? So that's interesting, and you have childcare, healthcare, housing, homelessness, recreation, so a great balance there, fantastic. So if there's no other questions, again, I will thank you for coming again this morning, you did a fantastic job. We look forward to hearing more from you in the future. We have a new rep there, Counselor Ballas, so anytime you have any concerns or questions, you can always send them his way, and he'll bring them directly to us. I think that I heard a few asks today. One will be that a safe place for a youth center, that'll be coming from Lola as we start our budget discussions. And then you're wanting just to make sure that you, the youth group is creating opportunities, and also retaining the residents in Drayton Valley. So that's a big goal, is that people stay in the community, so that's fantastic. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for coming in today, and it was nice meeting you all.
Yes, thank you guys again.
Yeah. Do you want, do you want council to come in the photo, or are you gonna get them just all here? How about you get them here, and we'll stand here? Let's do that. You want to come down front here, and then we'll stand, we'll stand behind? Still taller than me.
One more person, Isaiah. Perfect. Yeah. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you all, it was nice meeting you. I'm just wondering, should I, before I move on to the next delegation, I'm gonna just call a 10-minute break, and then we'll reconvene. And then we'll move into the Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association delegation. We will reconvene our meeting at 10:11 a.m., and we'll jump back into our delegations. Next on the list is 7.4, which is Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association delegation. We have Mr. Jerry Greiner here this morning. Welcome, come on down to the podium. Oh, can we bring it up here, Nathan, above me?
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was up here.
It was up there, but it's kind of small, so some people have a hard time.
That's okay. Is it up here now?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, great, it's both places, now I don't have an excuse.
Nobody has to turn their head, yeah.
Yeah, I won't have to turn my head. Well, I also brought Rick with me, who's one of our other executives, Rick Borgan, and we're a couple of the executive from the Drayton Valley Flying Club, Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association, you guys would know it as. And as the Aerodrome Association, we look after the airport, sort of on behalf of the town. We manage the airport, we look after everything that gets done there, as far as the day-to-day and the long-term type of things. We've been doing it now for just under three years, in a contract with the town, and our contract is expiring, and February it's up, and we expect we'll renew similar contract. But we started on a three-year term, and from our point of view, it seems to be working good. The airport, you know, as far as the pilot seat and the airport stuff, it's a lot better than it ever was previous, so we kind of think that it's doing a good job. Does this work for next slide? Perfect. Maybe. There we go, there's a slide. Okay, this spring, we started off with fires, like a lot of everybody around this town saw a lot of the fires. And that was kind of the beginning of the spring, when a lot of stuff seems to start happening. Everyone gets these emergency alerts on their phone, and we got evacuated. And pretty soon, we realized this airport was very important. It got used a lot in the evacuation. There was a lot of ambulances, they carried the people from the, from the hospital, all the ones that had to go, out to these H and S, HS planes, and some HS, some were contract planes, but as well, we, it got used a lot during the evacuation. There was planes and planes and ambulances and planes, back and forth, trip after trip. More planes and more ambulances, over and over. 15 flights altogether, we think, out of here. So it got used a whole bunch there, you know, when the fires were here, right on our doorstep. So it was quite a, the airport became quite important really quick when we had to do that. Normally, it gets used, I'm not really allowed to say, because HS doesn't let us say, but it gets used regularly for HS transports. But they don't want us to say until we have a big number. I think I've heard the number is, we can say if there's 30 flights this year, and we don't have 30 every year, but they don't want us to say because we're a smaller town, and if we say, you know, there was a baby in November transported, everybody can figure out who it was. So they said we're not really allowed to say, because we would like to say, because I'm sure lots of you guys know people who get transported and it saved their life, but we can't. So anyhow, it gets used for that. As soon as the evacuations were done, in came a whole bunch of helicopters. The airport became the air support base for all the firefighting operations, for all the aerial operations. So there's, the big helicopters were here with the big water things. A couple of them were based here, and trip after trip. And they, they made flight after flight out of Drayton. That was their, their base, as well as they used it as their, their office, their command post, if you will. That's where the fire boss was. And there were some helicopters, the smaller ones then came, a lot of the smaller-sized helicopters, not, not quite as huge as well. And it was used, you know, as our daily office, that's where all the, all your decisions, where should we dump this, and where should we make this fire line? They would fly the guys around in the bird dogs, they call it the, you know, they'd fly the fire boss, or whatever their real term is, I think they call it fire boss. But anyhow, the guys it's calling would fly around, and that was their base, over and over for a month. And then, after the fires, we got back to doing more normal stuff around the airport. We had a breakfast, which we've done now every year. There's around 1,000 people came for the airport breakfast, or the flying breakfast. 30-some planes flew in, and quite a few, like lots from town. It's a big event, it's a fun, family-friendly event. There is lots to see and do around there, lots of planes, lots of food. We served around 1,000 people breakfast. There is helicopter rides that we did the same day that was put on. The money raised from the helicopter rides went to some local fire victims, so we gave to the ones that lost the houses, and we split it evenly amongst just everybody that lost houses. We just give, end up giving them, them the cash from that. So that's where, that's where the money went for helicopter rides. There's a lot of people that took helicopter rides, it seemed very, it was very popular. So it was a neat little helicopter that you got to go up in, and it worked, it worked well. It was actually sort of a last-minute switch for helicopter rides, because the helicopters we had planned were out fighting fires. So we had to do a last-minute switch, and got a guy that wasn't fighting fires to do the ride, so it worked, it worked out in the end. So, there's lots of planes flew in, lots of people, friendly faces flew in from other places. And the breakfast is a very family-friendly event. I'm sure lots of you guys have come, I know I've seen quite a few of you out there. So something you know, it's very, very, there's lots of families. They get up close with the planes, get up, get to talk to the pilots, and that, and have a fun day at the airport. Soon after that, we were backdrop in a movie, so there's a couple of Russian spies came, and one of them's a local Russian spy even, said anyhow. They were some Russian spies in the backdrop of a movie that was filmed around this area. So it got used a little for that. On Canada Day, we, we have this parade, we've got these new, can you see it good on those? I guess not bad, can't see it on that one, but those, we call it a plane train, for lack of a better word. They are, the kids just love it. And so we had that in the parade, we also had it out at the breakfast, and, and out at the airport. And just our club, our flying club puts it on as a fun thing to do in the parade, to raise awareness for the flying club in the airport. And the kids really loved it. And if you're in the parade, there's one big kid in there that was super smiley, that didn't fit in the things, but still had a great time. There's some hot air balloon rides that was put on as well over the summer. It was sponsored by one of the local businesses, and a lot of people were able to go up and partake in some balloon rides. And that was popular, and we also had the plane train event. The balloon rides didn't go as nice as we wanted, it was too windy for the first part, so there was a lot of waiting and waiting and waiting. And the kids just had a lot of fun on that little plane train while they were waiting as well. So there was a lot of them. Let's see, airplanes of all sizes are using our airport. There's some commercial ones that, they come in, like a lot of our local, some of the local businesses fly in there fairly regular. You'll see, like, say, Warehouser, Kelty Airplane, some of the trucking companies, a lot of the bank kind of people fly in as well fairly regular, and in the corporate planes, so that it gets used fairly regular for the corporate planes coming in. And then we also get used for the crew transport. There's some that are, that live in Drayton that fly up north for their, for their work to different places, and so some planes come that are really nice as a crew transport. So those are some of the uses that the airport has got so far this year. Next, a couple upgrades that we are gonna be looking at in the fairly near future. We have kind of an antique fuel system, if you wanted to say. It was upgraded, and the tank is good, but we still have a fuel system where you, you can sort of see the meter there. You write down how many liters you took on a little piece of paper, and then we send you a bill, and you pay your bill. It's kind of a very, it's an honor system. We've never lost money on it, and pilots are mostly honest, and you know who it is, but it's very, there's not very many places you go buy fuel and write down how many liters on a piece of paper, so they can send you a bill. We should update it, and so that's probably our number one upgrade that we're looking at. It would just make life a lot easier for us. And then another upgrade that we're gonna do soon is the taxiway. The pavement on the taxiway is getting quite cracked, and you can see it on that picture even. It's, our taxiways are gonna need some work, probably in the next year or two. The runway itself is good, the runway, we're gonna tar, we've already given out the contract for that. It's gonna be good then, no matter what, as we're first on the line in the spring, they say. And the runway is good for several years, probably another five or seven years till we, eventually it'll need to be resurfaced or something, but it's down the road. But our taxiways are getting cracked, and then when you take the plane over, it blows up the rocks and it hits your tail. So we, we have to keep cleaning the rocks off, but there's, the taxiways are going to need. So those are our top two things, or changes. Any other? We'll go through, anyhow, those are the top two. We do have some others as well that we'll eventually get to. Let's see, the Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association manages the airport right now for the town. We get a budget from the town of Drayton Valley, and we're on a three-year contract that sort of expires. The budget is, the contract's due to be renewed, and every year we put in a budget, which we've already done previously, so we won't really talk about it here, but, but the overall budget's 140,000 roughly, I think it was 141. Slight increase from last year by about $6,000 up. The crack filling cost more than we expected, by quite a bit, substantially more, and that was the only increase for the runway. The rest has been the same throughout our three years. So there's that, and... So, sort of a summary, the airport's been used pretty much continuous through the year. It gets used for many local and, and other businesses. There's a lot of survey work that goes through there, and I'm sure the town has pictures of this stuff, and aerial pictures done every now and then, and that's all, they'll often fly from there. Just about all you guys have meters, like gas meters, that get read from the airplanes flying in and out of our airport, and they fly over in the sensors, however it does that. There's a lot of pipelines around this area, we are very much in an oil field. Every pipeline is flowing every so many days, they got a window, and they fly it roughly every pipeline four times a year. And those guys are here weekly flying the pipeline. There's usually virtually, they spend three or four nights every, they spend four, three nights or four nights every two weeks in town, pipeline survey kind of guys. Airport gets used... It airports gets used lots, like we see the things where it's an emergency and we need it for evacuation firefighting. The RCMP is trained this year out on the taxiway doing some of theirs. What do you call it, their skid training or whatever? They're they're driving, practicing their their crazy driving. So it it gets used occasionally for other stuff as well like that. This airport brings to Drayton Valley lots of hotel meals, people that are here, that are working here and the crews that live here that fly out. So it it brings a lot of it brings money to Drayton Valley, not directly, but very, it's a lot of indirect use. We have a GPS approach that's been used lots since last year. It's been the GPS approach or the RNAV approach. It's like a, like you know how you have your Google Maps to find where you're going, turn right, turn left. It's the same thing in the sky. It's all based on GPS. And because of that, they can find here like AHS used it over and over and if they got to fly in people. I didn't know, but I've learned after being there, if you have an infant, they never take stars. They always take the fixed wing. Or if you've got to go to anywhere other than Edmonton, the stars doesn't have the the distance. So if so, if it's a stars thing for an adult or an older person, it's stars and then you typically don't use the airport. They fly from the from the from the air, from the hospital aerodrome there. But if it's going, an infant, they can't go. I don't know what, it's something to do with the vibration of the helicopter, right? That's what they said. But anyhow, they, all the little ones, if it's if there's someone small, they always fly fixed wing out of our airport. And also if they have to go for something where it's, they have to go to Red Deer, Calgary or a different hospital, they always fly the fixed wing. So it gets used quite often, you know, as as the air ambulance. So I guess that's kind of kind of our summary. Any any questions?
Well, thank you very much for that. Thank you for the presentation. Councilor Ballas and myself had the pleasure of joining you and a few others from the association a couple of weekends back. So we did get your wish list for some items on there and ways that, you know, potentially the airport could grow and some ideas and stuff like that. So thank you very much for taking the time and thank you very much for taking us up in the sky too. Very interesting to see and also to see, I guess, a look at the damage from the wildfires, what it looked like and kind of that aerial view and how it's changed for sure. So thank you very much for that. I will now open it up for questions. Councilor Evans?
Well, I'm a little bitter that you two got to go up for a ride in a helicopter, but.
No, it was in a plane. A couple of different planes. We heard they were coming. We made sure there's planes ready to take them just in case.
Well, lucky them. So I'm just curious about a couple of the things, you know, the taxiway pavement. So it's just an overlay is required there? You're just going to take the loose stuff off and put an overlay?
It looks like an overlay. The the pavement got damaged actually when the, it's been damaged and getting worse and worse. But it was damaged from the water trucks when they did the, what do you thought, the races were out there. And that's what did it. So it's it's got a firm foundation. It's been like it hasn't moved. It really hasn't had anything done to it for probably thirty years. So it's solid underneath.
Just the ash vaults.
The ash vault is cracking on the top.
And the the fuel system, are you looking at like a card system or are you punching in a code or something digital?
The fuel system, what we want is where you take your debit card or your credit card and you swipe it, same as your fuel pumps. That's what we ultimately want. Some of our stuff is reusable, like our tank is okay, the pump is okay. It needs, they were explaining, they're coming out again. Another company is coming this next week to have a look and give us another quotation to see what's usable, what isn't. But it's like the way it is, is it needs some upgrades to be able to use everything. Our meter puts out a pulse, it's not quite the right pulse. So our meter is good, but there's an add-on thing that we don't have if we use that. And then you need like the card reader display.
Everything's got to talk to each other.
They got to talk to each other and it doesn't talk with enough enough resolution, the one we've got right now.
Gotcha. Okay. Lastly, just a statement, I did attend the the breakfast and it was, it was very well run, a great event. And yeah, your airplane train there was full for the whole time.
It was a hit the whole time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor Cabana?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation, both of you. I'm just wondering, the upgrade to the GPS system was done about a year ago, right? So I'm wondering about, you know, if if that increased the utilization a bit. And also I would like to know from from you, you know, what other things that we and we could do to increase the utilization in that airport?
Okay, okay. The GPS definitely increased utilization. We've, we get the survey companies here now, no matter what the weather, they come consistent as well as AHS comes here. The very, like just a day or two after it was published was the first flight out of here by AHS. And that one was, the pilots, the weather was too bad to come. And the co-pilot said, well, I've heard they got a GPS system now. And they checked and, oh, it is up and running. So within the first couple of days was the first AHS flight because of that. But then now AHS comes because of that system. So it gets used by that and it gets used by like the survey companies more. So it increased utilization some. There's an ongoing, the GPS has an ongoing cost to it. They always monitor all the stuff around. For instance, when there's fires were out, you know, they they can't, you can't use it then for a while. We couldn't use the stuff to the south and we couldn't use stuff to the east. And so there's a, the engineering firm that looks after that is constantly monitoring like the airspace and up. So it's constantly updated. And during the fires, we really noticed because there is somewhere you couldn't come from the south. Then you could come from the south if you're from the southeast, but you couldn't come southwest. You could only fly in from the north and and they they do keep that constantly updated. So there's, there's been a lot of training flights in here from schools that come as well. So we see them come and and we don't have any schools local, but the schools come from others and they they land here and they they go back to Edmonton or or the different schools.
The other thing was, you know, there was some chatter about drone training and other stuff like that. Is is that a possibility if we can find?
We've not had any discussions about it with any actual that want to do the drone training. I know we've heard that it's a possibility, but we haven't had any discussions.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for our airport. When we were talking, Jerry, at that time also, I think we discussed the possibility or or the option of looking at another fuel source.
Yeah.
Which would also increase the utilization and that would be jet fuel from what I understand.
Yeah, that's correct. Right now, we only have avgas. And so avgas is what most of smaller planes have. Jet fuel is what the big helicopters have, you saw that in the picture. And when the big helicopters were here, that, that was avgas. The helicopters, that's avgas. But these big ones, you notice there's a fuel pumper there in the in the middle? That was a tanker supplying just jet fuel for them. We don't have it and they use a lot of it. If we would have had it, they would have, we would have sold them a lot of jet fuel, but we don't have jet fuel right now. So the big helicopters, we can't, we, they have to bring their own fuel source when they come. So that is one thing that the new fuels, there's two upgrades to the fuel that would be needed. And the one that we're going to worry about most is just getting the avgas working with a credit card. And if we upgrade with a new tank, then it'll have both. That'll be a lot more costly upgrade. But then there's a lot of these planes that come through that would fill up if we had the jet fuel. It seems that we don't really know the numbers, like because we've never had it. So but there's a lot of planes that run jet fuel that are in and out of here. And the jet fuel use typically a lot more fuel, like instead of, instead of like gallons per hour. These ones, the helicopters use nine hundred gallons per hour. No, seven hundred gallons per hour, which is a lot of fuel. A lot of these little planes are like ten gallons an hour roughly, right? So like they used a lot of fuel in comparison, which we don't have that. But so if we do put in a tank with the multiple, like with the avgas and the jet fuel, we'll likely sell a lot more jet fuel, but it's kind of an unknown because we've never had it. So that answers your question?
Yeah, thank you. Secondly, if I got my numbers right, there's approximately eighteen hundred and twenty flights per year coming in and out of our airport. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's in that ballpark. There's thirty a day probably all summer long. So that would be in the ballpark.
I guess my question is, we have no transportation from the airport to our town.
Great.
So if there was the possibility of having a courtesy vehicle there, do you feel that some of the pilots may stay a while, come to our town and maybe have a meal or just visiting shopping?
They get used absolutely. Sedgwick has one and Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain House has one. Sedgwick is a good, their community is sort of smaller than us, but their town, what they use for a courtesy vehicle at Sedgwick is the oldest county vehicle they have gets left there till they get another old one and they trade it off. And so they, it's ultimately the oldest county track is what's left there for a vehicle, but it works. It does, it does the thing. Rocky Mountain House is, Padernies has, they they sponsor it. They leave a vehicle there. So a courtesy vehicle would be used lots, I'm sure. Like there's, like I said, there's four, well, there's, so it's two nights a week at least. There's, there's planes there overnighting with a couple of people. So it's, the cabs get used there lots and there's lots of people that are driving back and forth. Pilots carry it, but a courtesy vehicle would definitely bring that. And then it would also bring the ones that are there during the day to to come to town a lot more likely, like it's easier to bring.
Thank you. I think that would be very beneficial, absolutely. Except from what I understand, sometimes pilots even spend the evening right in the terminal building.
They sometimes do, yeah.
Going forward on the potential of the airport, we discussed what opportunities may be there such as aircraft mechanics or a flight school perhaps. What, going forward, what would be required for us to consider those sort of options?
Okay, I'm not sure if it's hundred percent. I know what's required. I don't know if it's a town commitment or a public-private partnership or a private. We don't have a place for a mechanic to come and set up. We don't have an empty hangar out there that's big enough for a mechanic or for a flight school. A mechanic is probably fairly easy to attract. Most of the mechanics would would like to rent a place to do their stuff. They don't want to come and build like a, build a hangar and then start their business. They would much sooner pay their, you know, their three thousand dollars a month or whatever the rent is for a hangar that's there. So having a, some type of a hangar, whether it's standalone or attached to a terminal or whatever, would be very beneficial as far as attracting a flight school. As far as building a hangar, Athabasca built one, a fairly large one. And it got rented out almost immediately, all the stalls in it, and they built a second one. Like right, like right soon, the next year, they built a second one. So there is demand probably the same here for that. But whether that has to be a public thing or a private thing could be up to up to debate.
So there's opportunity for investment.
There, there is opportunity to put that.
Local community to consider something like that. Next thing, when I was at the RMA, there was a presentation brought to us by the Alberta Airports Management Association. Are you familiar with that?
We are familiar with it. We are going to be members within a couple of days. We're not yet members. It's, it's all Alberta airport management. There is a twelve or thirteen Alberta airports already in that and we will be in a couple of days. We we've got this stuff, haven't signed up for it yet, but started.
From his presentation, it looks like it's a very beneficial membership benefit program that's available. So I was going to suggest that perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that at our meeting last week and we're, we're in the process of getting signed. We haven't actually committed to it. They look very beneficial for us. That also Kara Westerland said we should sign up for that from the county. And the Wataus Glen Airport said we should sign up and be part of this. So we're getting it from three places in the last few weeks. So we're definitely signing up. It's not an expensive thing to do. It's, it's like a couple hundred dollars a year, but it's a voice for the airports.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming and giving your presentation. And I did hear in that presentation, there was a couple asks there of support. I believe you do have a grant application here too on my desk that's needing to sign. What is the grant for again?
The grant will cover runway and PAPI lights. So fixing fixing stuff on the runway and fixing PAPI lights. There's other grants that we'll be applying for that's not this one. There's, there's ultimately some long-term capital projects we would like. The the two shortest are the fuel, which we don't see any grants yet that we can make the fuel into a grant. The paving, but a terminal replacement, some electrical upgrading, some fence. And we're going to keep applying for those. We don't need those capital things this year, but we're going to apply for the grants and eventually get those through grants as well. Ideally, or at least the majority, they'll be co-op, you know, they'll pay seventy-five percent and then we'll have to raise the difference or whatever.
Yeah, okay, great. Bart and I met with MLA Shane Getz in about a week and a half ago. And we were talking about, along with some other mayors and reeves, and we were talking about the rural airports, right? And ways to grow them and things like that. And I think that the MLA had mentioned that there's another grant that's coming forward. So once we get a little bit more information on that, we'll be sure to share that with you as well.
Sounds good.
Thank you again for coming and we'll be talking about some of these asks again in our budget discussions.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is seven point five AIM Network, Mr. Matt Delorme.
I'll introduce Matt. We've been working with Matt from AIM, which is Atlantic Infrastructure Management. They're a consulting firm that's been helping us develop our asset management strategies across our various asset categories. The project is scheduled to work through to March of next year, but at this point, we're pleased to give you a, an update as to where we are so far. So with that, I'll, I'll turn things over to Matt, who's joining us remotely.
Perfect. Hello, Matt, are you online? Can you hear us?
I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
We're just going to adjust the volume. You're coming in pretty quiet. So just if you can just give us a minute. Nathan, is there a way that you can maybe, oh?
Does that sound good?
Oh, yeah, that's a lot better.
Okay, perfect. And you can see the presentation on the screen?
Yeah, we can see the presentation on the screen.
Okay, perfect.
Good morning and welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. I am the Executive Director of AIM Network. We're actually a nonprofit organization. Our mandate is to help municipalities with asset management in whatever, whatever way is necessary. I'm a civil engineer by trade and spent most of my career working on heavy infrastructure projects, including lots of municipal work. So when I say asset management, as I go through here, what I'm really talking about is something we refer to as sustainable service delivery. A lot of people think about sustainability as environmental things. We're just talking about how can we continue to have the services that we've had in the past going into the future for all of the changes we have in our municipalities and as our infrastructure ages. The reason we're doing that is because infrastructure Canada did some studies and and realized back in the mid twenties that about half our infrastructure was reaching end of life by twenty twenty-seven. We don't have updated information across Canada, but in twenty nineteen, the infrastructure deficit was about fifty billion in near-term replacements and about a hundred and twenty-one in medium term with the long terms anywhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and forty billion dollars. That doesn't include climate vulnerability. So the short story with that is that we built a lot of infrastructure in the sixties and seventies and eighties and never properly planned for how we were going to replace it. And that's why we really need to put a focus on this right now because it's very likely that there just isn't enough money to fix all of the infrastructure we need to when we would like to. So this asset management process is a way to look at what are our going to, communities going to look like? And how can we prioritize the key places for investment to go? The way we do that, as you can see, our three-legged stool of asset management planning there, which is looking at the service levels, what services are you being provided? What is the quality availability of those services? What's the risk to those services? And ultimately, what is the cost of providing that level of service and risk? So the program we're working, this is kind of a mid-program update for you as you go into your budgeting. So we did policy reviews, we're working, we've worked through data validation to make sure everything you had is up to date and current. From there, we can look at a risk assessment based on the likelihood that infrastructure is going to fail and what the consequences of it. We did a level of service assessment to say what services do you provide? How do you provide them? And just as a really quick example of the type of thing we would look at with that is something like, how many? is something like how many water main breaks are acceptable per year? So obviously, if as infrastructure ages, that number tends to go up. You need to replace infrastructure. If you want to maintain your current level, then you need to invest the money to replace the water lines. Or you can look at, you know, things like we don't have the money to do that, so we're going to accept a higher number of breaks per year. So it's, it's kind of diverting from the old way where we knew there was a bunch of work that needed to get done. We would look at what money was available, do whatever we could and hope for the best with the rest. With this long-term planning, we're really trying to get a handle on what those long-term budgeting decisions mean for those services. Ultimately, from that, we end up with a capital program that looks at not just the near-term and the five years, but what does your investment look like over the 20 years? We focused at this point on, more on the near-term through the rest of the project. We get into the recommendations around the, the longer-term planning. Lastly, is making sure that you have the operational processes in place. So once we do a big project like this, with, with our mandated AIM Network, we do a lot of training and education and our goal is to leave those skills in the municipality so you can continue to manage these programs going into the future. You have an asset management policy, which, which hopefully you've seen and are familiar with. But just as a quick run over, the principles in it is that you're going to base things on level of service. You're going to look at all of the assets all at once and not just think about, we want to build a recreation facility, but what impact does that have on your ability to repair things like roads and water lines and sewer lines? Ultimately, looking to be sustainable over the long-term, both with your services and budgeting, and continuing to innovate and improve. As part of the project, we've, we've worked on getting all the GIS mapping updated. So you've actually got fully updated locations and conditions on your infrastructure. Right here, you're just looking at your, a snapshot of your, your road conditions. This is a bit of a zoomed in version of all of your linear assets. So we're looking at roads and water lines, sewer lines, sidewalks. So these are available to you just to give you a good glimpse as council on, on the state of your infrastructure in visual format. With that though, we actually keep a lot of information. When we say GIS, it's geographic information systems. The geographic is the mapping. The information are things like what size are pipes, what width are roads? What are things made out of and what is the replacement cost? This that you're seeing on the screen is a snapshot of the replacement cost of your infrastructure. So you can see you have about $500 million or half a billion dollars worth of infrastructure in Drayton Valley, which is no small feat to manage for a town the size of, of Drayton Valley. One thing we look at just as a really rough estimate when we get this together is if we take the average replacement cost of all of that infrastructure, just based on its useful life or expected life, it would be about $9.9 million annually or about $1,500 per person in Drayton Valley. That might strike you as wow, that's above our tax and utility rates. The good news is for you is that when we do the detailed planning, we look at where can we extend the life of infrastructure? How can we push things a little bit longer? And start to bring those down into numbers that match your, your budgeting a, a little bit closer. So this would be again, just typically you get recommendations saying you should fix it at its expected end of life. We look at ways that we can manage risk so that you're, you're really focusing on the ones that have an impact of highest consequence to your services. This is just a quick overview of the average condition of various pieces of your infrastructure. I won't go through all of these in detail in interest of time. But what I will say is that you're, you're actually in pretty good shape. But the way that Drayton Valley grew with the initial core and then moving out into the, the outer areas, you're not in crisis compared to what we've seen in some municipalities. This is a one to five scale where one is pretty much brand new. Five has a higher likelihood of failure. You can see you're sitting a lot in the mid-range. We get really concerned when we see a lot of fours and fives in here because that means that your infrastructure is getting close to failure and you need to fix it immediately. You have some time to plan. One of the things we look at with planning is how to deal with your road conditions. And again, I will go through this in detail right now, but what we look at is should we, should we target a pavement management system where we try to keep your average road condition as high as possible? You can see an average condition. This is on a one to 100 scale where 100 is in really good shape. So higher average condition, but you can see that your five-year investment is, is really high. You're getting into $7 million a year with $133 million over the, the total maintenance period we're looking at. And then we look at a mid-range one, which we're still in the, in the midst of, of getting exactly which road should be fixed when in the next 20 years. But what you can see is that we can accept a slightly lower average condition that's still meeting your targets, essentially keeping you slightly above where you are now, but we can reduce the cost a lot. If you don't take on a management program with things like crack sealing and overlaying and, and that kind of thing where you just let roads reach their end of life, what you'll see is you end up with a shorter road life and yes, it costs you a bit less. However, what you're missing here is you're seeing there's, you're, you're setting yourself up for very poor road conditions in the future, which we're avoiding having management programs like crack sealing and overlaying. You'll get a lot more details about this when you get the capital program to review. But I just wanted to give you a glimpse of that right now to give you a heads up on some of the recommendations that are going to come through, like keep up on your crack sealing and overlay programs. In our level of service assessment, that looks at if you maintain your infrastructure just as it is, where are you not meeting your target service levels? And the projects that came out of that were a couple of wastewater projects that were really regulatory driven to meet current regulations. You can't just keep using the same wastewater system that you have. Also twinning, twinning one of your water lines, looking at some municipal office upgrades in order to accommodate the staff that you need. And you're also going to hear me talk a little bit about having capital to operating. And, and what that is, the recommendation we're going to come out with in that you have some protected capital investment for smaller capital projects that don't have to go through the budgeting process every year. And there was a couple of things you might've seen on the initial budget template that I sent forward that are going to be different than the one that I'm showing you here, where there was some drainage work out by the Greenwood Development, some, some little work on, on upgrading some washrooms, those types of things. Rather than look at them every year in your capital budget, what we would suggest is have a little protected dollar figure that every year your staff has, that they can invest that in those smaller projects as they come up and as they're required. And, and we, we suggest keeping that like a, a little reserve fund. So if there's $100,000 a year going to it, if they only spend 50,000, the remaining 50,000 can roll over in case there's a slightly bigger project the next year and they need 150,000. So you'll, you'll see some recommendations coming in for that. This, I, I won't go through in detail, but I just wanted to show you that there is a real definite process in how we do our risk decision-making when, when we're prioritizing projects. And the reason we do this is we want everyone in the municipality to start thinking about things in terms of what is the likelihood that you're going to have a service interruption? And what is the, the consequence if, if you have that service disruption? And it really helps to put things on a level playing field, whether, you know, should we build a new community center or should we fix the leaking roof in the Public Works Building? It lets you look at the sort of very different projects with, with the same view. This is a glimpse of your 20-year projections. And what you're seeing is that most of what we projected is roadwork with some fleet in there and a little bit of facilities. But what I wanted to flag to you is that there's this huge jump coming with water and wastewater out in your 15 to 20. We're going to have a recommendation that you start to reserve fund that. You're in a good position because most communities have hit the point where they need to fix these systems now. And there are these, you know, sort of millions or tens of millions of dollars in water and wastewater upgrades and they have no reserve for it. So their only choice is to let those get older and perform poorer. Drayton Valley is in a position where you can start to reserve fund those and understand that you can have some protected budget in order to repair those when they start to come up in 15 or 20 years. This is looking out over 50 years, which we don't use for project planning because it's too far out. We, we don't have that going to handle on costs or technologies that are going to be there in 30 years. But what it shows you is you're continuing to have those water and wastewater systems get older. And you, you really do need to have some reserve funding in order to deal with that. But with that, we came up with the short-term priorities, just a few differences that you're going to see in the, in the one that you might've been given before this. Because Ken and I had a discussion between Friday and today, is that we've adjusted some pricing on, on some heating for the Omniplex. Some of the smaller projects have, have been taken out. And there was one for a, an expansion of the ECDC. And when we initially did the level of service assessment, because we'll never take projects off just because there's no money, we'll ask questions about risk and level of service. When we initially did it, the, there was, the, the input we were getting was that there was a lack of available childcare in town. And there were some thoughts that the municipality was going to take that on. It sounds like when, when I just had the discussion the other day, that that's no longer the case. Even if there is that lack, it's a discussion with you as a municipality. Is, is that a municipal responsibility to step in and fill that gap? Because what happens is, is there's a multimillion-dollar line item that comes in here and then you need to make a decision on where's that money going to come from? Is it, is it going to be at the expense of doing less roadwork? Or are you going to cut back on, on, you know, sidewalk and trail removal? But really looking at that comprehensive view of all your infrastructure. So we, we want to make sure that as we're making decisions, that we're, we're seeing what the impacts are on other projects because you have to do something like the regulatory upgrades here on the wastewater system because that's to meet the legal minimum of providing the level of service. Last thing is, is that this is in progress, but we will, at the end of this project, be giving you a full capital print plan document that lets you read in detail about why we're doing this, where your revenue is coming from, what your regulatory requirements are, how we do the risk assessment, how that drives the capital works recommendations, and finally, your financial summary over the short-term, five years and longer term, over 10 and 20 years. And then the continuous improvement program is how to keep that updated indefinitely into the future. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. It definitely helps bring things a little bit clearer into perspective and I guess highlights some of the risks and where we need to focus some of our attention when we're moving into our budget discussions, when we're looking at that those long, long slated away, I guess, capital projects for sure. So we'll open it up for any questions from council. Councilor Clark?
Thank you for the presentation. I guess when, when it comes to infrastructure, you know, I've had the luxury of going to Europe and I've seen Roman aqueducts and they're thousands of years old and, and they're still in use. You know, we have stuff in town that's, you know, 50 to 70 years old and is requiring replacement. Now, I guess a question for the lack of a better term, do we suck at building infrastructure in Canada and in municipalities in general?
We don't. So, so one thing, Roman aqueducts and some of those old stone bridges were overbuilt. We could do that. It would triple the cost of projects. So we, we've made a decision because of our changing needs in infrastructure over spans of 50 or 100 years that we build them for that design life. With that said, there is some infrastructure, like say your water lines that you're looking at. We've projected those year 15 to 20. We don't suggest that you absolutely fix them then. There's a, there's a process that's built into this where we say, keep an eye on them operationally. And I've worked with municipalities here where they have 100-year-old water mains that are, that they're not out fixing leaks in them. So we suggest they don't fix them. So with that operational review, you can actually help target infrastructure so that you're really going with the ones at that higher likelihood of failure. So no, we don't suck at building infrastructure. I'd say yes, we have some improvements we can look at. There's always that balance of cost and durability. But we, we use typical life spans to forecast out and then refine that as we get closer to the day we're going to actually repair it.
Thank you. And then one other question, when we're looking at risk, you know, do we differentiate things like say roads versus, you know, a water distribution line? An example is, so 120% of useful life of a road is, I think materially, materially different than 120% of the useful life of a, of a water distribution line. Do we, do we kind of look at those differently or we use the same criteria?
We, we do. And without going into, we, we do full-day workshops on, on doing risk assessments, which we've actually done with your staff. But there's, there's a few different ways to look at, you know, failure of a road could be that you, you can't use it, right? Failure of a road could also mean that you're not meeting your average road condition targets, which is what we're actually focused on in this. So what we do is, is consider different possibilities of failure and what the consequences of those are. So for a water line, you're going to have a higher likelihood that you'll run into a break, but a lower consequence because you have the staff to go dig that up, fix it and, and, and get it back running again. That's different than having a failure where you actually, you know, lose the, the use of a, a water system. So I guess the short answer is that yes, we consider different failure modes and different consequences. And then plan the infrastructure replacements based on, on that kind of full-picture view of the likelihood of different types of failures and the consequence of each of them.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So just, you know, when you, when you look at the, the big picture and the numbers and all that, you know, when you compare with the taxation that we have for the municipality, you know, you tend to think that it's disproportionate. Where I think, you know, we have 500 million worth of infrastructure and we are collecting about 15 million of taxpayer taxation. And also we're doing other stuff with that as well, right? So of course there's infrastructure grants and all of that out there, which we apply for time to time. But my question is that, you know, when, when this is all done, there will be a, a report that back to us saying, you know, with the taxation we have, with the, I guess, the spare amount that we have to spend on infrastructure, there will be kind of a roadmap that you will give us to, you know, get to where to go, considering the, the taxation we have.
Yes, yeah. So, so we, we definitely, when we, when we initially build these reports, we, we won't recommend tax increases immediately because we know how difficult that is to do. It's likely, if you're like pretty much every other community in Canada, you will be underfunded in supporting your infrastructure. So then it, it just becomes of how you as a community would, would like to deal with that. Part of it's going to be, we hope, some, some lobbying to the, the federal and provincial governments to increase infrastructure funding to meet these needs. Some of it might be deciding which infrastructure you're able to delay. Some of it might be looking at, you know, nice-to-haves versus critical infrastructure. So yes, we, we will basically have a good five-year plan laid out that you can just target building all of that based on your expected funding. For the 20 years, there will be lots of discussion points that you'll take forward into, into future councils because you can, you can address it by raising more money. You can address it by lowering levels of service, reducing the amount of service that you provide. And those aren't answers you'll necessarily have now, but you'll be well-equipped to have those discussions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Well, thank you very much, Matt and Ken, for the presentation. And we have a lot of decisions ahead of us and we look forward to the next part of this asset management and how we can not increase our taxes, I guess, and get us the capital projects that we want.
We, we won't, we won't make, increase them during this council term. That, that much I can, I can, I can guarantee you. We, we won't, we won't make it, increase them during this council term, that, that much I can, I can, I can guarantee you.
Well, that's fantastic then. Well, thank you very much for joining us this morning. And we look forward to seeing how that looks in the, in the coming, uh, what, what would be the coming, if I say weeks, is that uh way too premature?
We're, we're finishing it in February, so it'll be.
Okay, perfect. So just before final budget discussions, perfect. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. Take care. Did you have anything to add, Ken, or is that it?
Oh, no, I, oh, my mic was on this whole time. Um, just that it's been, it's been really good to have a more like expert opinion, I guess, and working with our, you know, experts here. Um, and I think the best thing about this project is, uh, well, there's two big things to note. A is that, um, the reason why asset management was pushed federally is, is because we are all running into similar issues at the same time. We're all coming to that point where a lot of critical infrastructure is going to come up for replacement. So he said some numbers at the beginning of the presentation that I can't even really quite fathom, to be honest. But needless to say that it's going to be really, really important to look at the, the long-term, the big picture and then prioritizing. And so that was really neat. And then the other thing that I really enjoyed about this process, uh, I haven't been as involved as I'd like to, to have been. But um, is that walking our staff through the process of risk analysis and how to determine levels of service and how that impacts us. Um, so getting us started on this and letting us to kind of take the reins, we don't have to necessarily engage uh someone like Eam over and over and over. Although, I mean, every few years we, we might need to. But it allows us to do some of that analysis in-house once this initial next stage of the asset management um plan is developed, which is really great. Um, but yeah, it'll really assist us in budget, budgeting going forward. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think um balancing um levels of service with the cost to the taxpayer is extremely important. And it allows council to see what levels of service that you're aiming for and what, what the requirement is. And then of course, lastly, lobbying the government. We all know that um, the infrastructure funding is, is not where it should be. Uh, and that I think some more emphasis should be put on municipal infrastructure. So there are some numbers out there on how much of infrastructure, aging infrastructure are owned by municipalities. But it is really, really, really high. It's, we own all the old, we municipalities of, um, in Canada own um all the infrastructure, all the old aging infrastructure. So yeah, thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm just really excited at the point we're at right now. There's been a lot of pre-work up to this where we've, you know, trying to get our, our data systems, you know, cleaned up and, and, and gathering all the data we can and all the, the training and, and uh who we've had with staff over the last few months. And we're just at the point now where we're really going to be able to develop some very tangible um outcomes from them. And so I'm really, really looking forward to that. Um, Vincent and I will have, we still back there good. Vincent and I will have a, a lot of work to do here in the next upcoming months to uh kind of really start putting some, like I said, some tangible information to council that we can start making decisions off.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for that. Very well said. Uh, I know that it will help council uh in the decision-making. It helps us look at that, that risk and whether we're going to repair, replace, or, and what those costs will be. So this is where kind of we want it to be heading is towards that asset management analysis. So thank you very much for all the work that you've done and we look forward to, um, yeah, seeing more.
Thank you.
Perfect. And that wraps up our delegations this morning. And um, we do have a little bit of business that's arri- arising from the delegations. A lot of those requests will come forward at budget time. Um, perhaps some letters of support too will come out of that. Um, I know with Opportunity Home and as Ms. Thompson had mentioned as well, for the advocacy to the provincial government when it comes to our infrastructure and things like that. So those will come up uh in the coming weeks. And we will jump into our decision items right now, starting with nine point one, which is our Community Standards Bylaw Text Amendment, Unfit Structures. Mr. Cody Rossing this morning. And thank you very much, Mr. Hamden, for being so patient with us this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So purification is a key aspect to community pride, business development and investment. A clean, well-maintained community is a signal to residents and business owners, new and existing, that the town is investing in the community and that it continues to be a great place to live and work. In June of twenty twenty-two, a new Community Standards Bylaw was introduced into the town of Drayton Valley. Since then, Enforcement Services has been actively enforcing the Community Standards Bylaw and has identified an area requiring attention to increase the overall ability to enforce the bylaw as intended and to its full extent. During the October fourth regular council uh meeting, council through motion directed administration to prepare an amendment to the Community Standards Bylaw to include provisions for landowners being responsible for structures deemed unfit for human habitation. Administration has worked with legal and has prepared Community Standards Bylaw Text Amendment, Text Amendment, Unfit Structures, twenty twenty-three O two P, which is before council today. On October eighteenth, council unanimously passed first reading of the proposed bylaw. The proposed bylaw would amend the current Community Standards Bylaw as it pertains to structures deemed unfit for human habitation by Alberta Health Services or deemed unsafe by a safety codes officer by also including landowners, not just the owners of the structures, to be responsible to ensure the structures are either repaired or demolished and properly removed. As this amendment is going to have the greatest impact on uh owners of lands with structures they may not own, such as mobile homes. Administration has reviewed the Mobile Home Sites Tendencies Act with legal and believes that owners of mobile home parks would have legal avenues to pursue through the Alberta Courts of Justice. Town of Drayton Valley recommends that mobile home park owners seek independent legal advice on their most appropriate way to deal with structures on their properties. However, administration suggests that most applicable parts of the Mobile Home Sites Tendency Act to the six, to the set situation are sections twenty-five E, F, G, sections thirty, thirty-two and thirty-five. Further, it's important to note that once a order is issued, the person or corporation on the order has the ability to appeal the order to council within fourteen days of receiving the order. Council can then confirm, vary or cancel the order. In addition, should the deadline approach for completion, there is a mechanism in place uh to allow for an extension to be granted by resolution of council, which is outlined in the Community Standards Bylaw. When we talk about financial implications, um, should the amendment not be made, Town of Drayton Valley will continue with the enforcement of the C S B in its current state, which may result in high cleanup costs of part of the twenty twenty-four budget and beyond incurred by the town. These costs may be recovered through collections, uh, if owners of the structures are properly, properly identified. To the contrary, if this bylaw is passed, there will be an increased cost to the owners of the lands. Uh, this proposed bylaw amendment has been reviewed by legal with no outstanding enforceability concerns. The uh stakeholder and communication strategy that we've done is prior to the first reading on October eighteenth, administration reached out to the owners and managers of the mobile home parks located within the town of Drayton Valley and provided via email a copy of the agenda package and proposed bylaw amendment that was presented to council on October eighteenth. All parties did confirm receipt of the email. On October twenty-sixth, administration emailed the mobile home park owners and advised them that the proposed bylaw unanimously received first reading by council. And administration requested that if mobile home park owners wanted to provide feedback, that would be included in the agenda package. They could do so by November second, so that gave them a week. Further, administration provided contact information for council, so that should mobile home park owners want to reach out directly to council, they could if they wished. Um, on October twenty-sixth edition of the Drake, Drayton Valley and District Free Press newspaper, um, there was a short write-up about the proposed bylaw amendment under Town Council News. Uh, lastly, with that, administration through social media on, there was two posts on the town Facebook page as well as two pick, two posts on the Enforcement Services Facebook page uh regarding this proposed amendment seeking feedback. The social media post reached two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight people. Um, since soliciting feedback on October twenty-sixth, administration did not receive any feedback from mobile home park owners or members of the public. However, prior to receiving fee or soliciting feedback, administration did receive one email from a manager of a mobile home park expressing dissatisfaction and requested it remain the responsibility of the owner of the structure, not the owner of the land. They requested further information be provided to the owner, which it has, and no further response, neither for or against, was received by the owner of that mobile home park. Um, as this amendment is going to have the greatest impact on owners of lands with structures they may not own, such as mobile homes. Administration has focused um their contact with mobile home park owners. Should the proposed bylaw receive second and third reading, the proposed amendment would become law and Enforcement Services would begin enforcing Community Standards Bylaw in its new state. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that. I'll now open it up for questions. Council Evans?
Not sure if I have it straight in my head what I'm trying to get at here, but, so ultimately, um, the owner of a trailer brings it to a, to a, one of these communities and is paying rent to keep it on that land. We seem to run into issues when that owner seems to disappear or we can't identify the owner of that, of that trailer when we're trying to pursue it.
Correct.
So how does that ownership get lost? Or does, does it, they're not required to inform the, the uh park owners when they, when they sell that trailer or someone else takes over ownership of it?
To my understanding, there is no legislation that requires them to notify of that. Um, as it's different than a house, you're not normally going through, you don't need to go through lawyers or anything like that to formally sell your property. You don't need to register it with land titles. So um, there's no kind of government record, if you want to call it that, of who owns these, these mobile home parks or these uh mobile homes, sorry. Um, so it does pose a challenge on tracking down some of these, these owners of these um mobile homes.
So, so I guess maybe could be included as part of the requirement to rent in the first place that any change of ownership must be brought to the, to the park owner? I, I, I'm just looking at somehow we're, we're chasing, chasing unknown people. Starts out okay, when that trailer comes in, it looks good, everybody's happy, but it slowly, it seems like uh some of them uh slowly deteriorate and get sold once or numerous times. And then, and then nobody wants to, wants to take the financial responsibility for it.
Well, and that's, that's why we have this proposed amendment in front of council is, we can, if we know who the owners of the structures are, we can still go after them. Um, but it also has the ability for the owners of the structures or the owners of the lands. Um, so if we don't know kind of thing, it kind of, in a sense, puts, puts more onus on the owners of the lands to make sure they're, they're keeping track of who's coming and going essentially on, onto their property. Um, and they're, they're still responsible for the lands around it, the property owners. Um, so this would just kind of put that additional onus on to making sure that the, the structure remains proper. Um, when, when we look at the Mobile Home Sites Tendency Act, I'm not quoting that correctly. Um, there are specific provisions in there. Um, and we have recommended in the agenda package, um, stuff for the owners of these mobile home parks on different things that they can do for new um rental agreements and for existing rental agreements to kind of help, help that process a little bit more as well.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Council Clerk.
Um, so I can see, um, so I believe all mobile home park uh owners in and around Drayton Valley require. Um, so any sort of tendency, whether you own the mobile or you're renting that mobile. Uh, like when we write up a contract, typically there's a contract or a, a condition saying subject to mobile home proof, uh, mobile home park approval. So they know who's coming and going generally unless somebody sneaks in and, and maybe Moe can speak to that. But um, uh, that's generally how it works. So they should have a pretty good idea who's in there, who owns it, so.
Um, did you want to respond to that? Typically, we would, I would allow this during a public hearing, but since there's a question and we have a mobile park owner here this, uh, this morning. Um, I'll ask you to come forward then if you wanted to respond to that and that gives us a little bit of clarity.
Worship Council, uh, thank you for that. Uh, good morning. Um, sitting here for two hours, I think I know why I didn't come back again and you guys on, on doing this. Um, yeah, I, I would love to respond to that and just a couple of things on the bylaw, if, if I may. Um, I know a couple of the owners were out of their, mobile home park owners were out of the country, they couldn't uh speak. And there's just so many other things going on and I apologize for not getting a submission in at time, but hoping to have an opportunity to, to address some of this. So first of all, um, as far as owners, our park managers do a pretty good job of keeping track of who they are, the new owners. And you know immediately uh when the new owner, because the rent check has to come from somewhere. And so you do keep track of it. Identifying the owner of them, that's not where the problem lies in a lot of this. Um, you know, and this, this bylaw and, and, and asking for, you know, or not asking, but sort of directing the, uh, that financial cost onto a handful of owners is huge. Uh, I've dealt with a couple of abandoned trailers myself as my own choice as a business owner. And you're talking about lending into tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, these aren't cheap and obviously, um, easier said than done than collecting them. Even in your background information, you talk about if this bylaw does not come in, there's a financial implication to the municipality. So you understand and recognize that collecting that is difficult. And municipalities have a greater um resources and opportunity to collect some of those funds. And for the most part, it's, it's a cost because unable or unwilling to, to, to pursue it. Abandoned, uh, they're gone, uh, you're unable to collect, that's a cost that's their unwilling. Uh, some of the, um, some of the recourse we have and some of the stuff that was pointed out, um, we're all aware of it. Basically what it is, is going in, seizing the trailer, selling it, recovering your costs. So it's kicking somebody to the street is what it is. And I see the municipalities not wanting to do that in those places. So what they've basically done is, again, shifted that to the mobile home park owners and left it to us to basically, if we need to recover, that would be the way. Um, part, part of the preamble talked about stakeholder engagement because there are only a handful of us. So I'm not sure if by stakeholder engagement you meant provide feedback to the bylaw that was there versus uh, let's sit down and come up with a solution. Because at the end of the day, I think we're all on the same page, we all want the same thing. How we achieve it, um, the mobile home park owners don't necessarily agree with this bylaw. And I think there's things that we can do together to come up with something. So it's my hope that you guys would not pass this today and maybe set aside some time for the park owners to sit down. And, and uh, you know, there's, there's a few things we can look at. You, you allow two years, maybe incentive program as well. Guys, get it done in the first year, uh, we'll waive tipping fees. Uh, we're going to be kicking, you know, having to evict somebody to sell. Maybe we tie in uh, uh, work with F C S S or we do something on, on that level. Because um, there's, there's, there's other situations. Um, yeah, we're on the owners to maintain them at, at, at a certain standard. It's important to us and important to the neighbors of the different uh homes. But it is easier said than done. And to put the responsibility of a hundred trailers, the hundred and five trailers that I don't own on me or on my company is a big, you know, is a big responsibility. And at minimum, we will see uh increases in lot lands. I mean, personally, we have not leased them in ten years. When you look at the cost of everything that's gone up, especially the last few years, we haven't. We will be forced to increase to uh, to accommodate some of these added, added costs. Um, worst-case scenario, uh, we got a couple parks in town where the land is, that is not best use. So it may get to the point where um eventually it's just not worth it anymore. And to change the use of that property and all of a sudden, now we've got so many more people needing desperately to, to find a home. And when we look at mobile homeowners, you've got a lot of people that that is their first home, it is entry-level. Or some people that uh are on a fixed income. Uh, so there are some challenges, we work with them. But if, if we want to pursue this, and like I said, we're all on the same page with what we want. I think it's an opportunity that we need the municipality to help us and give us some tools to uh, to enforce some of these things. Uh, when, when the mobile home bylaw was passed a year ago, we spoke in favor of the. When, when the mobile home bylaw was passed a year ago, we spoke in favor of the bylaw. There was a few things in it. We didn't approve of or didn't didn't like, but the actual bylaw and the ability to have tools to work with us. So I like the idea of stakeholder engagement. I'd like to pursue that a little bit further and see if we can come up with something that makes a little bit more sense for the handful of mobile home park owners and you know, come up with something different. So my ask to you guys to counsel today is to either table it or refer it to to a meeting where the handful of mobile home park owners can sit down with you guys and come up with a, I think a much better bylaw.
Thank you for that.
Okay. And if you do have any other questions, I know I came up to answer the one and the old politician in me kept on talking. So
That's okay.
Much like MLA Smith did this morning, you know, it's hard to get it out of our blood.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Okay.
I'll move towards Councilor Kamana. I think you had a question.
I think
Comment.
Why am I answered the question I was going to ask Colin from his professional experience about the tracking of the owners? Because if there's MLS, if they're selling the trailer, usually there's a paper trail, right? For the, for the owner, for the most part, but I can more answer that question. So thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know if I have a questions or just some comments. It's always hard because what we've heard from you is that when we're trying to, we have a community standards bylaw that we're trying to adhere to. So we're trying to clean up the community and hold it to a standard and we, we hold that or we're wanting to hold all business owners, residents and everyone to the same level of standard. Whether you own a mobile home trailer park or you own a home or a business or something like that. There's the expectation to, you know, have that, not have unsightly premises and things like that or, or things that could be of a health concern. So when you look at the, the mobile home, we look at it as you have the mobile home park owner who is the landowner and it is a business. And then you have the tenants that are renting or either they own or they rent the mobile homes. So then I try to look at that as, you know, if you owned a house in town, who would be responsible if you had a renter in there? Or if you had an apartment building and you owned that apartment building, who is responsible there? So when I'm looking at these types of things that come forward, I try to make that comparison to hold everybody to that same community standard bylaw. So I'm trying to think in this situation, how it's different. I know that we've tried to chase down the owners numerous times to adhere to that. And we do how we do struggle that, you know, when we try to reach out, whether they're lying or telling the truth that they don't own the trailer anymore or who does or something. So it's kind of us going down that rabbit hole. So then it comes to, okay, if we want to follow our community standards by law, then at what cost? Is that a cost that's incurred by the municipality? Is it the responsibility and the role of the municipality? So for me, when I make these decisions, I look at, okay, if it was a house or an apartment building, would the municipality step in, right? So that's the kind of things that, that I look at and I come to the no, I do think that it does fall on the, on the landowner because it is a business. There's lot rent being collected. There is, there's a business going on. So it's, we can't expect other taxpayers now to pay for the cleanup of that. So unless you can show me how that can be different, then, then I find it really hard. I do agree with the comments that were said about, you know, we're trying to change the policy in the bylaw. But when it comes to waiving the tipping fees or maybe making that connection with metal necks, I don't have a problem, you know, looking at something like that, making sure that, you know, FCSS, we're not wanting to put somebody homeless on the street or something like that, that we could come in and maybe that's something that we can include in the bylaw or something that we're working or maybe it's a condition or something. Same with needing the tools and incentives. I think I'm always open to looking at those things as long as it's not a cost to the municipality, that it's a connection or a condition. So that's kind of me rambling on. I don't know if I've, if I've helped with the decision or stuff, but that's the way that I view it. So go ahead. If you, if you want to respond to that, then I think Councilor Evans might have a comment too.
I just wanted to respond to the trying to identify what that difference is. And to me, the difference is pretty clear because whether you're renting a house or apartment building, the landowner is the same as the building owner. I mean, I own Woodhaven. I've got 36 units in there. I'm renting 35 of them. I own the place. It's my responsibility to maintain the land and/or the building because the ownership is the same, where the ownership is quite different on a mobile home park. You know, the park itself, the work that we need to do, if there's issues with the park itself and upgrading, yeah, we own that, we own the land, we own it 100% our obligation to do that. The 105 units in Greenwood are not owned by us. They are 105 individual titles. And so it's, it's, it's not quite the same. Where I think we have a great opportunity is we're all on the same page. We all want the same thing to happen. And I think if we can come up with a solution to that, we can come up with a win. It is a different scenario. But we're all on the same page. We want the same thing.
Thank you. Councilor Evans?
Yeah, I agree with what you said. I think we all want the same thing. You know, it's a small percentage of these trailers that are, that are issues. I think where we, where we split in our opinion is the, the owners would like the taxpayer to subsidize the, the cost of, of getting rid of these trailers. And I don't feel that it's, it's something that the municipality should be, and our taxpayers should be taking on and paying for. A trailer and all probably was, was making money for many years, many years before it got to the point where it's no longer a viable place to live. I'm assuming that, that the owners wouldn't let a, a trailer that was unlivable, livable get, get brought into their park to begin with. So obviously there's been usually many years of, of income generated for that trailer, from that trailer before it gets to the point where it's no longer viable. I just don't think that you know, I, I think that's part of the cost of that business at this point. I, I, I just don't see how else we can, we can as a municipality protect the, the park owners from, from that expense. If it gets to that point where, where, where that, those units need to be removed. And I, and I, I just don't think that it's a, it's a, it's a cost that the municipality should bear.
Councilor Ballas, did you have a question?
Not a question, Colin. Thanks Mo for your presentation and your comments. And I think before we go forward with this file on its current state, it would be probably prudent on our behalf to probably meet with the stakeholders because perhaps there are things that we could negotiate. And your suggestion of tipping fees, but still your responsibility to remove the trailer. So I, I think there are things that we could negotiate and I don't think we had that opportunity for having done that. So I would certainly be in favor of that.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Yeah, but probably Cody could give us a little bit more information about how much of stakeholder engagement has been done? And you know, what, what has been discussed and you know, we are hearing from one owner that it's not been sufficient. So for me to make a decision over whether to think that, you know, we need more stakeholder engagement, I would like to know, you know, what kind of engagement we've done so far.
Yeah, absolutely. So as I've already read out here, prior to the first reading of the bylaw on October 18th, administration sent out the agenda package to all the mobile home park owners and make, made them aware of the bylaw coming forward to council. On October 26th, we then sent out an email to all the mobile home park owners, again with the agenda package, seeking feedback from them. Soliciting feedback to be sent to us by November 2nd, so that we could include it into the agenda package that would be presented today. There's also a short write-up in the Drayton Valley and District Free Press about this. And then lastly, we put two social media posts on the town page, two social media posts on the enforcement services page, which reached 2,978 people. Again, letting them know of the change as well as seeking feedback from mobile home park owners and the public if they had any feedback. Like I said, the only, the only response we did get was received before we started soliciting feedback and that was from one manager of a mobile home park. Which at that point they just expressed their dissatisfaction, requested remain the responsibility of the only owner of the structure, not the owner of the land.
Okay, if I may, so have, have there been any direct connection with the park owners and then asking for having a meeting?
There's no meeting that was arranged or anything like that. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? There's no other questions that there's, I need a council to be making a motion of some sort today? Councilor Evans?
I'll make the motion, throw it out there. The council give second reading to bylaw 2023-02-P as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. So if per se, you know, we go through the second reading and we approve it as a council and do not do the third reading now, we have the opportunity to have a meeting with the landowners or the trailer park owners between that, right? And then bring the concerns. For me, I, I think again, working with the trailer park owners is vital. We, we've worked with them so far. And to have one last go at it as well, we know, I, I think we are on the same page as, as Mo mentioned. We know what we need to get done. In the end of the day, we are trying to make our community attractive for everybody, everybody to live with, live in. But it's important that we work with the stakeholders to, to get there, right? So in my mind, if we approve the second reading, would we have the opportunity to organize something like that, especially with the council? Cause I would like to directly, you know, get information from them as well.
Yeah. If that's kind of the direction that council wants to go in, I would suggest probably the alternative motion number four would probably make a little bit more sense on council gives second reading to the bylaws presented and directs administration to do XYZ kind of thing. Alternatively, something to keep in mind is when we have these public or public consultations, needing whatever you want to call it, most likely we're not going to be putting into a bylaw that you need to do this, but the town's going to waive tipping fees, et cetera, et cetera. Right? That, that would kind of be outside of the law. That would be its own kind of separate thing that we're doing in addition to kind of thing. So there's nothing stopping if we had second, third reading today that we still work with the park owners afterwards to what does this actually look like going forward kind of thing, right? So there could also be, again, we could have, have a meeting in two weeks with the mobile home park owners. Whatever's decided out of that, there could be a further motion from council on council directs administration to waive tipping fees for the next year or something like that, right? There could be a motion of that nature down the road that would kind of further solidify what we're doing, but it's not putting it right into law, which could get a little bit messy down the road.
Okay. Can I make a friendly amendment then if you could? That to direct administration to have a, organize a meeting with the park owners between the second reading and third reading?
Yeah.
Okay. You just accept. Yeah. Just put your mic on please. Oh, did you have your mic on when you made the motion? Okay.
Yeah, I'll I guess I'll accept the amendment. I, I don't I question whether between second and third reading is going to be advantageous. Cause to me, the bottom line for this is I, I think mostly the cost. It's what it seems to be. The owners don't want to pay the bill. They want us to, the taxpayer to pay the bill to get rid of these things. And that's to me what the, mostly what the negotiations will be about. And as Cody said, those, those arrangements can can be made even with the bylaw in place. The park owners have the opportunity to come to council and, and make that proposal. Ready to move the trailer will, will council waive the, waive the dumping fees, which is again, an expense to the taxpayer, not directly, but ultimately that's what's going to happen. Yeah, I I guess I'll accept the friendly amendment. You know, whether it happens in between or after, to me is, is, is not that important. But if, if that's the way council feels, then I'll, I'll accept the amendment.
Thank you for that. So there's been an amendment made by Councilor Kamana, friendly amendment. Councilor Evans accepted that council give second reading to bylaw 2023-02-P as presented and direct administration to set up a meeting between the mobile park owners and, did you say in council? Or, and the council to discuss further. With that, any comment, question, debate on the amended motion?
I think that the only comment that I would say is that I agree with all the comments that have been said. I think we're all trying to get to the same solution and, and clean up our, our community and have it beautified and things like that. And I think that there's a way to work with the mobile home park owners so that we can reach that without that cost falling on the taxpayers and coming up with a, a solution that everybody wins. We get these places cleaned up. We don't leave anybody homeless and we're all heading in the same direction. So if that's a discussion between second and third reading, then so be it. We'll have that. And I think that this motion gives us a little bit of that extra time just to solve problems that we've been dealing with for so time, for some time now. So with that being said, there's a motion on the table. Councilor Ballas has one final question or comment.
Just for clarity, if we pass second motion with this, second reading with this amendment, and then we decide that we're going to change it, so then we don't pass third reading. So then what happens? You go to developing a whole new bylaw?
Yeah, I, I think if we don't, if
Yeah, cause you can't vote on the same bylaw twice. So you'd have to, if it's defeated, there would have to be a new.
Most likely, like there are timelines, I have no idea what they are off the top of my head, that we'd have to wait before different similar motions type thing could be brought forward. But we'll say a year possibly waiting in between or that we would just leave the bylaw in place, which would take us to how the current bylaw reads, which would be, we'd already have to be cleaning up the properties that are currently deemed unfit for human habitation, which again, would have that 2024 budget impact.
So you can't make an amendment after second reading?
No, we have to vote on the amended motion that's made now.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilor Kamana?
Sorry, my understanding is that, you know, if we pass this motion and then go to third reading. But we have the meeting with the stakeholders and we have discussion. Hopefully, you know, we can figure that out outside of the bylaw, as you mentioned, you know, trying to understand where they're coming from and what things that we can do separately from having this bylaw moving forward and have everybody on the same page. But even then, if, if there's a slight change to the bylaw that we would need, that would be an amendment to the bylaw, the same as that we've done the bylaw amendment already, right? This is amendment that you're bringing in, it will be the same process to, to do the bylaw. We are not voting on a separate new bylaw. It will be an amendment. That's my
Yeah. If we're on third reading, if there does need to be amendments in third reading, I'd suggest the motion would be something along the lines of council approve, third reading to bylaw with the following amendments. And then we could make, make those the date of if needed. So.
Okay. So there's a second motion. Did you have a question?
Okay, so there's a second motion. Did you have a question, Monica? A comment? Go ahead.
So from what I understand, if we pass the second and third reading, there's nothing stopping us from working with the mobile homeowner. So the basic point is, would we be willing to reconsider responsibility of the mobile home that has to be moved? Are we taking it on or are we going to leave it as is in this new bylaw? Because if that's the case, if we are pushing for the mobile home park owners to be responsible for these buildings, and then we will work with them to maybe, you know, waive the tipping fees or whatever, then we might as well just pass this bylaw let it be and then work with mobile home park owners down the road.
That's what Cody had said to begin with, but there was an amend, friendly amendment needed to the motion. So there is a motion on the table that we have to fold on.
I, I guess the only thing I would be concerned if I was a landlord and it was not in the bylaw stating that tipping fees would be forgiven. It really means nothing because the next council could say absolutely not.
Typically, that wouldn't be in a bylaw, though.
No, that, that wouldn't be in a bylaw. And again, like I mentioned, if that was kind of the resolution that was occurred in a meeting afterwards kind of thing, council could still come forward at a meeting and make the motion that administration waives tipping fees for the next five years, for the next year, however that looks kind of thing. Plus A, B, C, whatever else is all decided. And then that way it's still in place as an official record of what's supposed to happen, but it's not kind of, it's not bringing it into the bylaw. And then if a new council comes in and doesn't want that, well, now we got to amend the bylaw just for that kind of thing, right? So I'd suggest if that's kind of where council's going is when there is the amendment on waive tipping fees or something like that, there would be an end date on that. So it helps this first round, or it's good for the next ten years, or however that looks.
Okay, Council Clark?
I guess I'm, I'm not ready to proceed with the third reading. You know, I don't think we have all the information potentially here. So I think with that, I, I don't think we can proceed with the third reading. As well, I mean, there's, it sounds like there's some information that could be coming our way that may sway our, our decision or, or maybe change some verbiage in here. So let's, let's have a chat with them. Let's talk with them and let's see, let's see what they have to say.
Did you have another comment, Council Evans?
So in theory, we could defeat this motion and, and, and simply make a motion that that council has a meeting with the, with the park owners before they consider second and third reading, something like that, correct?
I think that's what the motion is.
Well, no, it's, the motion is to give it second reading and, and have a, have a meeting be- before the third reading. So I guess it's six, one, half a dozen.
Make a motion, we can just, yeah.
You know, I'm just suggesting that, that, that we keep the second and third reading off the table here by defeating that, that motion and just say, okay, before we consider second and third reading, we'll, we'll line up a, a meeting with the, with the park owners and then it'll come back for second and third reading.
Wow, what a way to muddy these motions, right? To really make it more confusing. Last comment, Council Gomana?
I'll just make a table motion and then
Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to vote on the motions at the table right now. There's a motion on the table that council gives second reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash zero-two dash P as presented. Direct administration to work with the mobile park owners and set up a meeting between them and council. I will now call
I would just like to make a comment, please, that Rick, Council Evans has the right to withdraw his motion and we could go to three.
You can't withdraw the motion because it's been a friendly amendment that's made on the motion. So we have to vote on the motion that's at the table right now.
They both agree. I can't see why they can't withdraw.
You can't. So I will call the motion. The motion on the table is all in favor. In favor of the motion to go forward with the motion. Yeah. All in favor? All opposed? That is carried. So second reading has passed and there is direction has been given to administration to proceed or to set up a meeting between the mobile park owners and council. And we will end it now unless somebody's wanting to make third motion since second motion is passed. Otherwise, we're moving on. Okay, perfect. Okay, done. So thank you very much for your patience and that long morning. We're going to quickly jump into nine point two, which is the new school proposed traffic signage changes. Ms. Terry?
That's all right. Find, find an easy one. It's much less difficult than his. Yeah.
Okay, good morning, yeah.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Okay, so in twenty twenty-one, Wildrose School started planning on building a new HW pickup school at forty-third street and forty-third Ave. As the current HW pickup in Eldorado School had some structural deficiencies that required a new school for both locations. In twenty twenty-two, construction of the new school started and is expected to be completed by December of twenty twenty-three. Anticipated opening is expected to take place when students return to school after Christmas break. Administration will be implementing a school zone in the areas surrounding the new school for traffic safety measur- measures in accordance with traffic bylaw twenty sixteen zero-three P. No council decision on the matter is needed as the bylaw designates the CIO to authorize this change. However, administration does need council decision to convert the yield sign on forty-fourth Ave to a stop sign as is anticipated that many students will be in the area for drop off and pickup. So to increase safety or traffic safety, administration would like council direction on implementing this change. I've attached a map. It's not to scale, just so everybody knows. But it kind of just shows you where the school zone will be. And the forty-fourth Ave, you'll see there's a little stop sign that I put in, in there. That, that would be where we'd want to put the stop sign. I'm converting that from yield to a stop. The financial implication is two hundred bucks just for the, the sign itself. Traffic, uh, legal risk implications. Traffic safety is very important within our school zones. If we do not implement the proper safety controls on school start date, the safety of the children attending the school could be compromised. Level of service, we're trying to be proactive on our approach. So we'll have a positive effect on communicating this with, with the residents. Stakeholders, administration will engage with public via social media, local radio, local newspaper to get our message out to the residents of the implemented changes. Next steps, administration will obtain an official start date from Wildrose School Division to start the communication process. And then the recommendation is that council approves the proposed signage changes to be implemented on the opening of the new HW pickup school located at forty-third Ave and forty-third Street. This change includes replacing the yield sign placed at forty-fourth Ave to a stop sign. And I'll open it up for questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment or any, any questions for administration? Council Commander, do you have a question or are you going to make a motion?
No, it's the question, I guess this is this is for again, trying to figure out, this is near, near the Omniplex or this is?
Frank Medic High School.
Frank Medic, yeah, yeah, for the new school.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of on that yeah, curved road there that goes, so it's changing it from a yield to a stop sign. If there's no questions, is there a member of council that would like to make the motion? Council Evans?
I'll make the motion since I live on that street.
Is that not pecuniary interest?
Oh, yeah, yeah, maybe I shouldn't. Am I, is, is there, am I getting an advantage out of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I might set up a lemonade stand on that corner now, make more money. I'll make the motion that council approves the proposed signage changes to be implemented on the opening of the new HW pickup school located at forty-third Ave and forty-third Street. This change includes replacing the yield sign placed at forty-fourth Ave to a stop sign. That was a wordy motion.
Wordy motion. Thank you very much for that motion. Any comments, questions, debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Lunch is here, but we're going to quickly move on to the Early Childhood Development Centre board member appointment. I don't think this is going to take too long. This is a fairly easy decision, I think. So we'll jump here and then we'll break for lunch. Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor, and the, through to you, the chair, to the rest of council. So I hope it's not going to be too long. She had to walk away, so I'm doing this item. So basically, the bylaw that regulates our early childhood development board regulates that we have a certain people sitting on the board and representing our community. One board member has submitted her recognition from the board and that leaves one community at large position vacant. There was one application received, so the discussion was had with the committee slash with our department. And Joanna Snow, she has no preference for a one or two or three year term. So in the discussions, we prepared for you the following recommendation. And the recommendation is that council appoint Joanna Shaw for a one-year term to the Early Childhood Development Centre board. If there's any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Does a member of council like to make a motion? Council Ballas?
I'll move that council appoint Joanna Shaw to, for a one-year term to the Early Childhood Development Centre board.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Just the comment that I'm sure that she will make a lovely addition to the board and we welcome her. With that being said, there's a motion on the table and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. And next on the agenda is nine point four is our closed session. Before we move into lunch, I'll ask for a member of council to move us into closed. Counselor Deputy Mayor Clark, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. We will reconvene, I guess, enclosed or we are enclosed. We'll break for lunch, come back and then after we move out of closed this afternoon, we'll come back for department and council reports. We moved out of closed at two fifty-two and that was Monica that moved us. All in favor? And we had a discussion, no, no, we already did that. We had a discussion around a resident had sent forward a, a letter requesting requesting a refund on a booking at the McKenzie Conference Center. So we have a motion coming out of that. I believe Council Ballas would like to make that motion. You have to turn your mic on, though.
I make a motion that we refund blank, blank, the sum of five hundred dollars. I don't know.
He didn't put the name in, that's why. Yeah.
The sum of five hundred dollars as a partial refund on the McKenzie Conference Center for their function dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much for that. There's a motion on the table for a fifty percent refund on the thousand dollars for the booking at the McKenzie Conference Center. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I guess that the, I'll just make a comment in regards to that we went back and forth around this. We always have, I guess, residents come forward and make requests. And I think in this instance that the booking is nine months away and I think that fifty percent of the total amount is a fair amount and I do support this motion. With that being said, if there's no other comment, question or debate, then I will ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Okay, so we will reach out and communicate to the individual, please. Thank you very much for that. Okay, so that is the only motion that we have. We have, next up is department reports. First one is Municipal Service Department report, Ms. Shelley Terry. You're like, you weren't ready, right? I have it here, too.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, so utilities, exploratory work is still ongoing for the distribution upgrades. I think we've got one more location that we've got to try to get some exploratory work done in. New staff members currently being trained at the water plant. Confined space entry equipment sent away for annual inspection. And the Sager pilot is performing very well. We've scheduled an acute lethality in December. We want to see if it can perform in, in cold temperatures and, and meet our expectations. Public Works patchwork is being scheduled by internal forces to fix some of the exploratory work that we did for the distribution project. So that should be happening this week. Christmas decorations are scheduled to be installed this week and I did see them out hanging up all the snowflakes. We're also doing our display at Fiftieth and Fiftieth and then the lights on the structures kind of on Fiftieth downtown area. So we're hoping to do a grand opening of it or light up of all of it just before the, the Christmas parade. That truck work is still going on for distribution project. So we installed controlled crossings at a few different locations. We installed one at the Omniplex in hopes to get our signage changes done. Unfortunately, when I went by on November first to see if they were installed, one was missing. Our staff members noticed it was laying down. There were some tire tracks that had went right into it, so it was hit and still in working condition. So we're going to reinstall it, but we're going to put some barriers in place around it. So if vehicles lose control in that area, they're going to hit the posts and not the sign. So once we get that, we'll work on getting the communication out for the, the signage changes for the yield and stops. Parks is now officially starting their on-call rotation for the winter season, so just to be prepared for any sidewalk trails that we have to maintain. Cleaning of Deuse Park started on November seventh, so trails, I'm sure you guys had all heard that there was some mud tracked onto the trails. A lot was from foot traffic and from wildlife in the area, some from construction. So we were able to, to get in there and, and clean it up. The ground freezes, we shouldn't have any issues. I guess we've learned some lessons from this, for sure. Replacement of old basketball backboards, rims, nets is currently ongoing. They're still working on getting the flower beds ready for the winter season. Purple lights were installed on the structures of the downtown park and the floodlights at the civic center were changed in support of the Family Violence Prevention Month. And I did put a little picture on there for you guys to see. Engineering and landfill administration is working on capping design for Phase Four cell at the landfill. So any that are, they're done. I'm getting our final cap on, in place. Heater at the MRF building at the landfill was replaced. An inspection was done and fire department didn't make mention that there's combustible items inside the MRF building and we had a combustible heater in there, so we had to change that heater so that it would prevent any explosions from happening in the future. Landfill has hired a casual employee for the scale house. And now I have an additional update on the lighting for the ring road. Fortis reached out to us yesterday. They found another conflict along the ring road. And are pushing the whole thing to January. So unfortunately, it won't get completed this year, which makes me sad, but it will be installed. All of them, including Fiftieth, will be installed in January. A pipeline. And that's all for my report. If you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Council Evans?
What's the MRF building? What is it?
It stores all the hazardous waste. Landfill. At the landfill, yeah.
What's the latest with the, uh, with the, uh, gas pipeline? On our
Um, so Adco is well underway on their design. Um, so I, I know that, I haven't gotten an update this week, but, um, last week they did mention that they were having a meeting this week with Adco, so, um, the consultants are advocating for us. Um, Adco hasn't this time asked for anything from us, um, for funding of the project, so we hope that it stays that way and
Yeah, they shouldn't.
They shouldn't.
I mean, in the end, it's their responsibility to have it at that well, have it where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, um, and, and they are steel pipes and they do have a steel replacement program ongoing, so we're hoping that that the consultants are advocating for us, um, so they'll, they'll fight that battle if it arises.
And we got some time too. I was just curious as to, is it, are they taking steps? Is it moving forward?
Yeah, it is.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Um, just a question on, uh, the lights around the ring road. You said they're still scheduled for the end of November and then, or January?
January.
January. Are we going to see that for sure? Because it's been October, then it's November, now it's January.
They have written in their email that they promise this time that it will be completed in January. Um, so we're going to hold them to that for sure.
So along the ring road and forty-third, will this be all of them?
And Fiftieth, January.
Yeah. Okay.
So they were saying Fiftieth would be scheduled for next year because of the pipeline conflict over there.
Now they'll do everything?
Yeah, now they're going to make sure that it all gets done January.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, thank you very much for your report. Uh, well, we will along to ten point two, Community and Recreation Service Department Report. Are you reading that to us? He said, I gotta go and that he was gone. Well, maybe we'll go with Jen. Do you want to come down and we'll wait and see if he comes back? If not, we'll just read it. Uh, so ten point three Communications Department, Miss Stone.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Alright, we do have quite a bit on the go. I, I know that this looks like a little lean, but there's a lot, uh, happening behind the scenes that we're going to be working on. And especially as we come sailing into, uh, budget in the next couple of weeks, we'll be working closely with finance to make sure that the public is aware of where we're moving, what our priorities are. Um, so that'll be coming in the next couple of weeks, of course. Um, I put together Remembrance Day speech for, uh, the mayor. Um, it was on the weekend and I was there to take a few pictures. Uh, working with municipal services on updating the public on a few activities that we have going on and there'll be more coming. Um, also with the recycling depot, I believe Shelley was mentioning that we're going to be changing the hours and the access to the recycling depot, so that communication is being built as we speak and we'll be rolling out by the end of the week. That'll give us about two weeks lead time to update the public on those changes. Oh, and, uh, the new signage and the changes around the new school. Uh, just working with Shelley to make sure that, um, the communications are going to roll out an appropriate amount of time so that the public is aware of that. Um, last council meeting, um, Staff Sergeant Raditz had mentioned about the importance of reporting crime in the community and, and why that's necessary, even though that people may not think that there's anything that, that can be done about it, so we are putting some messaging out about that shortly. About the importance of that and that, um, for non-emergent crimes and crimes that are under five thousand, you can do that online. We do have that information on our website, but just helps to kind of regurgitate that back to the community as well. And of course, at the attended the M E T flag raising this morning, that post has also already gone out on uh, social media and the M D P, uh, communications, um, the open house has been set for December seventh at the C E T C. Um, so the communications have gone out there. It'll be in the newspaper tomorrow and that'll be rolling on social media. The survey is still live up until that date and then I'm just working with Peter on what the go-forward is following those. I'll leave it there if there's any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any questions? Doesn't look like there's any. Thank you very much for your report. Um, and then I'll jump to, I guess, our council reports. Uh, first up is councillor Comanna.
Thank you. Uh, November second, I had the opportunity actually, uh, to go to Gasless Ballet. Uh, that was their last dance. The next day they were handing over the keys to, uh, to the new owners, so it was a emotional moment for Yolanda and, uh, and the crew. Um, I guess, uh, that's the end of the, end of an era for, for Drayton Valley.
Yeah.
On the, from fifth to ninth, um, R M A conference, I had the privilege of, uh, going to that with, uh, councillor Ballas and sheriffs and, uh, connecting with the, uh, county council and some ministers, um, as well as, uh, R M A delegates as well. I'm sure they will go into details about no, not much, okay? So we had some sessions, um, that we went to, uh, some conversations that we, um, had with, uh, ministers as well, so um, it was a successful council, a successful conference for us in my mind. Um, on the tenth, uh, growth services meeting and strategic planning session. On eleventh, uh, Remembrance Day ceremony, had the opportunity to lay a wreath on behalf of the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley as well. On twelfth, uh, was the Diwali celebrations, uh, festival of lights, uh, had about fifty odd, uh, Drayton Valiant's together, uh, celebrating Diwali, uh, as well as, you know, lighting some, uh, sparkles, uh, was, was fun. Uh, on the fourteenth, uh, um, we had P B R S A meeting, Colin had, uh, first time joined the committee as well. So that's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Evans?
Not, uh, not a lot to report since last council meeting, but the, uh, also attended the, uh, strategic, uh, review. Our growth services meeting and, uh, um, also attended the Remembrance Day, uh, ceremony on Saturday. That's it for me this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sheriffs?
Um, so I attended Dr. Vader's, uh, thirty-five year in business celebration with Mayor Dogs. And, um, that was quite a surprise for him to see everybody sitting in his lobby. Um, attended R M A, um, strategic planning, Remembrance Day, M E T flag today, pretty much echoing everything else, yep.
Thank you for that. Councillor Ballas?
Thank you. Uh, again, the R M A and, and there was a couple of interesting things that came out of that for, for me. Uh, one was, uh, tourism. They're looking at breaking tourism into, uh, ten, ten, uh, ten different zones. Uh, I C Fs, they're doing a review on I C Fs. And, uh, it's going to be interesting to see what that review is going to be and what the new, uh, conditions or stipulations are are going to be in it. I, I know there's they're looking at removing third-party liabilities such as could be E C D C, could be libraries, those sort of things, or the I C Fs. But, uh, you know, who knows at this time? Uh, the other thing I found was interesting was a lot of support for rural airports, so I think we really got to jump on that. Because they're, they're really promoting rural airports. An interesting comment came from the premier. And as to where they're going to focus spending their money. She calls what she calls economic resources. So where there's economic resources, that's where there's going to be a whole lot of money spent. Because that's their revenue. That's where they get their revenue. And she said they want to make sure that those areas are looked after and that revenue stream will be maintained. Another thing that I found interesting was water management. There's a great concern about lack of water. To the point that it could affect fracking. And I suppose that would have some impact on our area. If there's a whole lot of drilling. But, uh, yeah, it, it was interesting. I, I just find the R M A, because they got so many ministers, we had the opportunity to speak with so many ministers, uh, you know, their requests, uh, getting at readers, uh, starting readers and the importance of, of doing that. Uh, whether it's joining one or forming one, but until you're in those positions, they're really not interested in talking to you. And there is so much assistance that if you ask for it, they will come out and give it to you. So there's I, I found them very valuable. Although they don't party past eight.
Oh, Millie, exactly.
Uh, going forward, we had economic development ad hoc meeting, strategic review, uh, permanent physicians recruitment, Remembrance Day, nerd webinar, uh, which we talked about today.
I don't think it's nerd, but close enough. It is nerd?
Actually, they call it M-erd.
Oh, N-erd.
Uh, youth advisory and, uh, the M E T flag raising this morning. That completes my report.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, yeah, I keep hearing how wonderful R M A is, right? And I don't know if we need to strategically plan to give A U M A a shakedown for next year and change things up for rural communities, or if we're going to have to strategize or I would say shift our, our budget to there, but we don't have a voting right, so that's not going to happen, so maybe we're going to have to plan how to shake down Alberta municipality so we have, uh, a better voice there. I think we should start strategically planning. Yeah, exactly, right? Uh, so for myself, thank you very much for your report. For myself, I attended the thirty-five year business anniversary for, uh, Dr. Vader with, uh, councillor Sheriffs and yeah, that was quite the surprise for him. He came out and said, are these all my patients? Past, present, everything, so it was nice to see another thirty-five years, uh, of a business in our community and service, so that's always nice to see when we are able to celebrate things like that. Uh, I headed to Emmettant, to the Legislative Building, uh, with, um, Reeve Bart Gion and other mayors and reeves, uh, to meet M L A Shane Getson and talk about airports. Again, that seems to be the hot topic and funding and, uh, where the province is going, so I think it aligns perfectly with our economic development, uh, strategic planning. And, uh, I'm excited to continue those conversations. I had a couple, uh, physicians meetings, uh, to talk about the health issues in our hospital and ongoing, um, physician recruitment in our community. Uh, attended, uh, the, uh, Economic Development Ad hoc. We had kind of a, uh, just a small meeting that was a delegation about, um, modular reactors. Thank you very much for that. Um, and, um, that's something that is a long ways off, but could potentially be, um, maybe in the sights for Alberta if our premier still keeps, uh, talking and pushing, uh, her agenda forward. It could be something that we might see in the next, uh, in the next decade. Uh, I also attended the Remembrance Day wreathling and the ceremony on, uh, the weekend, which was always lovely. It's great to see so many people come together in the community, um, to remember all the veterans, both past and present, their families and everything that they've done for us. And, um, yeah, it's just a nice way to, to, to remember, um, that day on the eleventh. Uh, I also attended a wildfire, wildfire preparedness, uh, meeting. And it's always on the forefront of my mind, like, it's just always there, even with this warm weather that we're having. And I just don't feel like we're prepared enough. I think we've been through that and, um, just some interesting things from the webinar, uh, or from the meeting, again, talking about, you know, where it begins as the preparedness begins with, starting at the leadership level. The organizational mandate to help leaders reach their goals, the public need to be better prepared. Um, lots of things, you know, that came out of that. So I'm hoping, I know we've had conversations with the county about how we're moving forward with this, but I think it's something we need to talk about more, um, where we're at with that. Um, I just had a proposal that's sitting on my office desk right now to look at for, to help with it. Um, a company in town wants to do something to help aid in that as well. So I think that we need to, um, better prepare ourselves, because I don't, unless we're just not being informed, right? So I'd like to know where we're at, how we can be better prepared. Um, what type of toolkits we have, not only for wildfires, but for things like, you know, going into winter, uh, what are the risks that are going to be happening there? Um, you know, we could have cold snaps where, you know, there could be emergency there and things like that. How prepared are our residents? How prepared are we if we we've had to evacuate, you know, how can we get our residents back in? How do we get people back to work? I think we have a lot of work to do and it doesn't seem to me like we're talking enough about it, so I'd like to know kind of where we're at and what's happening with all that. Um, yeah, so I kind of want to keep that at the forefront and that was hosted by A E M A as well, so lots of good information. And that about sums up, uh, my, uh, council report as all, is, as well. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept both department reports and council reports as information? Councillor Ballas, thank you very much for that. Uh, and so we move along to council items. Is there any initiated items or roundtable discussions that anyone would like to talk about? Before we wrap up the agenda? What do you mean pool closing? Can you put your mic on? Like
Who determines the schedule, whether the pool's going to be open or closed? Because I got a lot of people complaining that what do I do with my kids when it was closed on?
Thursday, Friday?
Saturday or whatever it was.
Oh, was it closed Saturday? Okay.
Yeah. So who determines that?
I think
No, it was, apparently it's scheduled closed, but why? Families are home? Big hockey tournament at the Omniplex. Kids had nothing to do, wanted to go swimming in our new pool. It was closed.
Monica, did you have something?
Um, so an R M A, Bill and I talked to a guy named John from Alta Link. Did you keep his business card? With Alta Link?
John from Alta Link at R M A?
Remember? Do you have his business card still? I lost it. Okay, because he was looking for contact, uh, where somebody from Drayton Valley, because during the fire, I guess there was a lot of damage down out west. And Alta Link was actually trying to kind of communicate with us a little bit more, but they couldn't for whatever reason. Anyways, it just came to my mind, so.
Okay.
I don't have his business card, but we both took one. I lost mine.
Yeah, I think I have it. I would, something that was unaware to me was that Alta Link is the major supplier of the power. I did not know that. And they were the ones that were not getting any communication, but yet they were the ones that were responsible for providing the power. So what they wanted to do and, uh, was we give the C A O our, his information so that he can have the contact information of who the emergency personnel are that they would have to contact in the event of another disaster of this type. Because he said it was pretty close to there being no power.
Oh. Wow.
I, I think, I think that goes back to Nancy's concern about our preparedness. I mean, in the end, we should have a manual that you throw down in front of you whenever we have an emergency like that or similar, that has every contact information for not only Alta Link, but every gas supplier, uh, every utility supplier in the area, uh, as well as any other, um, uh, companies that could be used. Including contact information, et cetera, and you know, and, and they should have our, our, our contact information as well. So, you know, I think that speaks to our preparedness and, and how we need to, we need to just make sure that we got the bases covered and we're, we're up to snuff there. Yeah, because we want to be, we want to be in better shape, uh, for the next one and, and I, you know, we're, we're training, we're, we're, we're doing things. Um, but yeah, there's, there's a few questions that I, I still have, uh, about, uh, our response and, and how we can how we can improve that.
Well, we do have a manual, we do have contact list and we have lots of contacts made before the fire. Um, like vendors, food vendors, like all, like very, 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 very detailed. Um, some of which needs to be updated, but we've made a lot of progress since hiring Joey, so we made a lot of progress. Now we need to make sure we maintain that and keep it going. So yeah, Kent and I have been talking about what that looks like in terms of a DEM position and a training officer. Does that look like one role? What does it look like? So we've had lots of conversations, so you'll see something coming in budget as well, but yeah, we've done multiple levels of training internally and so just like yeah, like there is progress. and so just like, yeah, like there is progress being made on that, that front for sure, and being more prepared. I mean, we had done lots of training before the fire, which speaks to a lot of what council was driving for before, but it just highlighted that need even more. So we had a lot of our staff have the basic and the next level up training, which was really, really helpful, so we're just continuing that, so like more staff have higher levels of emergency training.
Thank you. Just one more thing I want to mention, and I think it would be well in our interest to invite them and have them give us a presentation from their program that's called Canoe, which is their purchasing power.
Oh, AltaLink?
No. It's through RMA.
Oh.
And they, they just signed, was it Toronto or the whole province of Ontario? I can't remember.
So the company's called Canoe?
That's what their company is called, yeah. It's all through RMA, and they provide all kinds of services. And they're buying power, so there's nobody can compete with us. He said the ability they have to provide product or, they call procurement processes?
Procurement, yeah.
He said that they're number one, and that's why the province of Ontario lives. Was it province of Ontario or just Toronto? I can't remember. Anyway, I think it'd be well, I have some cards here that I would like to pass on and maybe have them. They said they would be very pleased to come down and do a presentation. They even like benefits even, you know, your benefit packages.
Interesting.
So if we could save us some dollars. Utilities, another one.
Okay, perfect. So if there's nothing else, we have no information items today. Just wondering for information items for next council meeting, do we want to see the joint letters that went out to the ministers as information, or do we want to just send them as an email to council? Email's fine, we can, I'm looking at Pam, but I should be looking at Bree. I guess once they're all, I don't think they're all quite finalized, we might have, did they all go out? Okay, that's just the last one. Okay, so maybe once we get them all, then we'll just send them all CC council just to have a look at them, to keep everyone in the loop that they went. And if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the meeting at 3:23 PM. We already did. You did. You made the motion.